President of the Council, Dr. Bernard Ashby from 305. That's what I'm holding for 305, thank you both pretty much stay safe out there. Thanks for the read up.
Is everybody in?
Everybody's in.
Everybody's in?
With your microphones on.
Special meeting in North Smithfield Town Council, August 3rd, 2020 is called to order at 7:13 PM. Before we open the meeting, I've got to remind everybody that's out there, if you can mute yourself, because we're hearing all of your conversations going on right now. When you do want to speak, you can see on the Zoom thing that you raise your hand. The clerk will see that and I will recognize you. Or you can try to get my attention by waving if I can see your picture on the screen and we'll recognize you. But if everybody could just please mute themselves for right now, we would appreciate it so that we're not hearing all of the background noise and interference that we pick up. Pledge, Madam Clerk?
Lord, assist with thy Holy Spirit of council, all of those who are serving in positions of authority and responsibility. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, perfect, just as for all.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Baramioli?
Here.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Rozier?
Here.
Mr. Zelinski?
Mr. Zelinski is experiencing some technical difficulties. He will be joining us shortly.
And Mr. Vatnay?
Here. Next item is open forum pursuant to public law 42-46-6D with a maximum of 15 minutes. I'm going to ask anybody that wishes to speak on the open forum, show that you raised your hand so the clerk will have a count for us. Or if you can let me, I can't see everybody's face right now, but...
We have Paul Jones has his hand raised.
Okay, anybody else?
Yes, there's a Jesse Jones with their hand raised.
Jesse George?
Jeff Porter with his hand raised so far.
Mr. Clifford?
And Mr. Clifford is commenting in the chat that he'd like to speak as well.
Okay. Mr. Jones?
Hey, well, thank you, Mr. Vatnay's and member...
If you just can state your name and your address for the record.
Yes, my name is Paul Jones. I live at 9 Oak Lawn Road. I'm also a member of the school committee, but I'm not speaking in that capacity tonight. I saw that the agenda has a piece of new business calling for the creation of the Hollywell Property Reuse Review Committee. And I think this is a great idea, and I just wanted to express my interest in being part of this undertaking, if it does go forward. Now, as a member of the school committee, the closing of Hollywell was one of my primary focuses. I was told time and again that the school would never be closed and our plans would never go anywhere. But the school committee in the district worked for a long time to find a plan that would best serve the town. I'm really proud that we were able to bring a satisfactory conclusion to Hollywell as a school building. I'm very interested in being part of its future. So you should know upfront that I'm very against the removal of the Hollywell name or any consideration of selling the property off for business or residential use. I'd prefer to see a community center there with services available to residents of all ages. My dream for something like a Hollywell Community Center would be a place which couldn't pump this art and gardens, recreation space, and a resource center for seniors. And I've spent a lot of years working with the senior population. And community centers are critical for seniors who need help with meal services, blood pressure checks, getting insurance information. And we don't really have much in the way of that in North Smithfield right now. So I think we owe it to the community to look really seriously at what we do with the Hollywell campus and how we can turn that campus into a community hub. I'm sure you're going to be looking for a diverse grouping of voices, and I hope that I can add mine. And thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. What else do we have? Ms. Scott?
Jesse George.
Jesse George?
Hello, Jesse George, 6 Sunny Crest Avenue. Want to talk about the stop sign at the...
Sorry.
I was going to have my son Cameron say a few things, and then I was going to finish off.
Hi, my name is Cameron George. I am nine years old and I live at 6 Sunny Crest Ave. I have two younger brothers and we all love to play sports like soccer, hockey, baseball, and lacrosse. When we play with our friends and neighbors in my front yard, we sometimes actually kick or throw the ball or shoot the puck too hard and it goes in or near the street. There are a lot of cars, there are a lot of cars that speed by and we want to be safe. We love playing outside. My birthday is in five weeks on September 11th. And all I want is stuff so we can all be safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Cameron. I just wanted to reiterate a few things that I said last week, last meeting. We have 22 or between 22 and 25 children in the neighborhood, all ranging from 12 to three, two years old. I wanted to also say I did recognize there was another petition going around in opposition. And I was just curious to see what their basis is on that. And I went to pretty much every house on Sunny Crest and they were all in favor. I don't know if the other signatures are from Sunny Crest or streets around it, but I don't think that they... Houses and residents in that and other areas would know the speeding and the amount of children that are on the road. And I did want to say I've noticed the new stop, look, and wave initiative that's around town. And I think this goes hand in hand with that. And we have a very high concentration of kids in this neighborhood. I don't know if there's another neighborhood in town that has 25 kids. I think stopping at an intersection and looking to see if there's a kid coming down the road or out of the side roads or out of a street and stopping for two seconds, I don't think that's a big deal in the long run. I did also want to ask the town solicitor, or maybe someone could ask him for me, if this does not go through and a child happens to get injured or hurt at this intersection or very close, would the town, could the town be held liable for not performing their duties for a good public safety? That's something I would like to know if something like that happens. And again, thank you for your time. And I hope for a good end to this tonight. Thank you.
Before we get to the next name, Ms. Scott, there's a gentleman named Mike waving his hand.
Yes, I see him.
I do see you. We will recognize you, but there are so few people before you, if that's okay.
All right.
Who did you have next?
Jeff Porter.
Jeff Porter.
Thank you, Mr. President, town council members of the council. As Mr. Jones has pointed out, sorry, Jeff Porter, 6 Country Way.
Thank you.
You're welcome. As Mr. Jones pointed out, there is the Howl Well property reuse on the agenda this evening. I believe I've touched base with most of you on Saturday just expressing my interest in participating in whatever capacity I can to assist the process for that committee. I was at the meeting in March where I really thought that there was a lot of good suggestions, a lot of good momentum to start with this project. So again, I'll keep it short, but I just wanted to reiterate that I am certainly very interested in assisting where I can and helping push forward the Howl Well project so we can really make a successful project in town that we can be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Terry Harvey.
Huh?
Terry Harvey.
Did we have Mr. Clifford before that or?
No, he was after that, I believe.
Okay. Mrs. Harvey?
Hang on. She muted. Trying to unmute, it's not working. Oh, there we go. Hang on. There we go. All right.
Thank you. I also just wanted to add about the stop sign on Sunny Crest. I'm Terry Harvey, 5 Sunny Crest Avenue. We've been requesting a stop sign on our corner. I just wanted to mention a couple of things. I noticed that lately there's been an officer pretty much every day watching the traffic. And I laugh a little bit because wouldn't you know, maybe it's because it's summer and it's so hot, there have not been anywhere near the traffic as there used to be. I'm not quite sure why. So I wanted to make sure people realize maybe there's a lot of people on vacation, maybe because it's so hot, all the kids are inside. It's not been typical the last couple of weeks, the traffic. The other thing is, the bigger problem seems to be the UPS trucks, the FedEx trucks, the Amazon trucks. The stop sign would help those people to stop. Someone mentioned, oh, everyone at the other end of the street already goes slower. For the most part, most of them, if they see children, they do go slower. We need help to stop the ones who aren't here every day. Just watching the kids across the street from me, a lot of the children in the area gather to play on the front lawn. The Georges are very good about, for a house that has such a beautiful lawn, they're so good about letting the kids all play there. And as little Cameron mentioned, all of a sudden the ball goes out. The kids are very good about stopping. The trucks going by are not so good about stopping. So I'm just hoping everyone will take that into consideration when talking about the stop sign. Thank you.
Mike Clifford.
Mr. Mike Clifford, 489...
Mike, we can't hear you.
Well, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Can hear you now, yes.
Yep. I'd like to speak to the Bushy School agenda item. And I'd like to request and suggest that the council might not take any action on that topic tonight or lack of information that they should have in front of them when they make this decision. And I'll delineate what I'm talking about. I've been seeing the number $900 to $1 million as a budget since 2018 when Mr. Secosia first presented his plan and his budget. And that's what was allocated to be left for Bushy School. A lot has happened since 2018. You've done Kendall Bean construction. You should be wrapping that up now and know how much is left. And in the original budget, he started with $5 million. He had $500,000 set aside for contingency, $100,000 for furniture fixture and IT, leaving him $4.4 for construction. He budgeted $3.5 million for Kendall Bean and the contract came in at $3 million. So that other $500,000 was $200,000 and some odd thousand for soft costs and another $300,000 and some odd thousand for contingency fund again. So, you know, in my mind, there's got to be a lot, or there should be a lot more left than just $900,000 to $1 million. And until you have a number in front of you, I think it's hard to make any plan. So I'd like to see and hope that you decide you need to wait until the finance director gives you a report of what's left of those bond funds. Not the architect, not the MBRTF, but the finance director of the town. I'd also like to suggest that, you know, this has been dragging for four years now. And the last two years, nothing has happened with Bushy. And now as we come to the end of the term of this council, it's all of a sudden at the front burner and being pushed up forward. In 2016, the outgoing council deferred making any decisions to the incoming council because it was a project they were going to have to live with. And I think we're at that same crossroads now. You could make a decision that might limit the ability of the new council and the new town administrator to take some action other than what you've set off in motion at this point in time, late in the game. So I'd suggest to, in benefit of giving them flexibility, you defer any decision now. I haven't in two years heard any council member or anyone, any administrator, any department, nobody saying, gee, when are they going to start moving on Bushy School? So it didn't seem to bother you for the last two years that we weren't doing anything. If you want to do small cosmetic work, fine, but any substantial work, I really think you owe it to the new incoming council and new administrator to make final decisions on that matter. Mr. Zelinski was one of the members who voted to defer, and I hope he holds that same opinion now. I'm also tired of hearing that this is a short-term solution to renovate that police station. I never heard Eric Ami from Studio Major or Mr. Secosia say that if we put $3.2 million or $2 million or $4 million into that building, it would be a short-term project. He was referring to a $900,000 repair and renovation. That would be a short-term solution. I'd like to suggest that there's an alternative that nobody has talked about yet. And I'd like to put that one on the table as a possible option. It sounds like it's either all or nothing. We build a new one or we do nothing here. And I think there is an option to fulfill what the voters suggested. The voters approved renovating that facility into a police station, a detailed renovation, cutting out everything downstairs and starting from scratch. And most of the problems were downstairs, repairing everything that needs to repair in that building. The bids when we went out in 2016 came in from $2.9 to $3.2 million. If you've got 1.4 left from the bond that's available, and the bids this time came to, let's say on the high side, 3.5, you're short $2.1 million. If you have 1.4 and the bids only go out a second time, but using Studio Major's bid specs again, come in at 3.2, you're short $1.8 million. You've squirreled away over the last several years into the fund balance. You taxed us $900,000 to add to that fund balance and we got nothing for it. So in my mind, it would be a simple solution to use the fund balance, use the bond funds that are left and any shortage up to a certain reasonable amount of money of like $2 million, you could certainly take from the fund balance to finish the job and do it complete. There'll be no tax on any resident of the town to pay for it because it's money we already have and it's in the bank and we already taxed on it once. So there'll be no additional tax and no additional cost to the tax pay. We'll get the project completed at zero cost. And I don't hear that being discussed as an option, and I think it should be. We've already paid for the bond, it's already covered. So I also have some concerns about the budget that you're adopting tonight, called the resolution that you proposed. I did a quick survey of the cities and towns in the state and I received 32 responses so far by email. And of 32 districts, there's only three who haven't sent out tax bills yet. Actually, no, I should change that. There's only one that I know of that hasn't changed out tax bills, sent out tax bills yet. And the vast majority, except for two or three, have not adopted a budget yet. And they never adopted a budget. We've adopted a budget into tax levy. And I'll explain to you what I learned from them and also why I question why that resolution that you're proposing is even needed. Because there's already two sections of state law that address providing extra funds in the event of a shortage of revenue. And there's also sections of the charter that address it. So I don't even understand why we're doing this. And my fear on that budget issue is we're going to end up with the highest tax levy in the state if you continue on the action that you are. When every other community in the state is doing the same thing, which is approving their budget and then sending out the tax bill and dealing with a deficit situation, if it should occur down the road, there's a reason for that. They're not 20, 29, 30, 30, 30 of them or 29 of them aren't doing it the wrong way and we're one of two that are doing it the right way. I think it could be the other way around. This is new uncharted waters. We've never been here before to this extent. And to make the commitment that you made during you adopted the budget to fully fund the school department for any loss of state aid, that's how I heard it, and I think that's how some of the school department people heard it, was reckless because you've signed on for a bill that you don't even know what the bottom line number's going to be. And I do fear that if you don't discuss this in detail, I'd like to ask that when that topic comes up on the agenda, you allow me the opportunity to address it. Because I did find out some interesting information. And I'd like to ask Mr. Rigliozzi, why the other sections of state law aren't covering us here? And would they cover us if we sent out a tax bill as normal? And I think it's to the benefit of the taxpayers, actually. I know that some people misinterpreted what my post was on my Facebook page, but I am actually calling for you to just pass a budget, send out the tax bills, and if there's a shortfall, then send out a supplemental bill. I believe somebody alleged I wasn't suggesting the opposite, and that's what I'm suggesting. And I'm also saying, don't give them the money now because we've given more money than we needed to give in the past to cover deficits that never came to fruition. They ended the years with surpluses. So you don't put the money in the budget to address a maybe deficit. You wait until they incur the deficit and as they prove they've incurred the deficit, then you bail them out and spend it and give them the money. But this is ridiculous and I feel like it's going to be a disaster for this community and every taxpayer in the town. Thank you.
A gentleman named Mike, I don't know your last name, but...
Hold on, hold on one second. Councillor Zelinski called me and said that he's at town hall. He was going to ask Gary to share his laptop with him. He wanted that to be known. Sorry.
Hi, I'm assuming you're talking. I'm Mike. My name's Mike Mars and I live at 27 Touregean Avenue, which is off of Sunny Crest. I'd like to mention something about the four-way stop sign on Sunny Crest in Carlton. Every day I go for a run and the only way in and out of the neighborhood reasonably is to go Sunny Crest down to the main road. And I also typically take a walk up to Cumblin Farm once a day. And I can tell you that when I'm out running or walking, I'm pretty attentive of traffic and I really don't see any traffic, anybody speeding in the neighborhood. And so I'm not really sure where there's the concern about speeding. Now, the police that's been parked in the corner of Carlton and Sunny Crest for the last couple of weeks, I question if they've given out any tickets for speeders. That would be interesting to know if they have or not. And if they haven't, then I just think aren't speeding. But then the other point somebody made was about, you know, kids running across the street. And I've lived in this neighborhood since my oldest was four years old and she is now 37. And so it tells you how long I've lived in the neighborhood. And I can tell you that, yes, I'm attentive when I'm driving to kids, Georges, the kids in that area of Carlton and Sunny Crest. But I do know that all the cars parked in front of, I think it's 5 Sunny Crest, that to me is more dangerous because that's where kids run out is from between the cars. So you're ever more attentive because of all the cars parked in the side of the street. So maybe if the cars weren't parked in the street, it clearly would give a better view of the kids playing on the front lawn, which is great, and people even coming out of the house and, you know, walking. To have a four-way stop sign, I always thought stop signs were to control traffic, not to control some other reason. I don't know what that reason would be. I don't really see where there's a lot of traffic that needs to be controlled there. Yet half the time when I'm running back from the main road, I don't see any vehicles at all.
There's somebody else that's on the line, Lily, that's overriding him.
We can't hear him.
I think he was just breaking in and out.
No.
Everybody else...
There's somebody else on the chat or in...
Oh, oh.
That's not muted. Their screen is lighting up and so it's overriding him, I believe.
That's too technical for my knowledge, if that works. There's a Carrie Ton that has her hand up.
This man's still speaking, though.
He muted himself.
Were you done, sir?
If you've heard everything I just said, then yes, I was done.
We can't hear you right now.
Because they were muted, then maybe you didn't hear what I had to say.
Your voice keeps coming in and out. You're breaking in and out, so it's very hard to understand.
Moderate or mute everybody but the student?
Everybody but you and the councillors are muted.
Have you muted everyone other than me?
You and the councillors, yes. I have to keep the councillors open.
Okay. The last thing I said was stop sign. The last thing I had said was the stop sign, I believe, were to control traffic flow. And I do not see very much traffic on Sunny Crest and hardly any traffic on Carlton. I'm not sure why there would be a need for a four-way stop sign with so little traffic in this neighborhood.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Will Sam Lou?
Carrie Ton.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Carrie Tonaclyff from 7 Sunny Crest Avenue. Just going to reiterate what other people said in terms of, there is definitely less traffic this summer for some reason. I saw the police officers out patrolling and I felt really good about that. So I decided to take my dog for a walk on Wednesday, July 29th. And what I came in contact with was a UPS driver speeding up the road to the point where I had to pull my dog off onto the grass to make sure. And of course, I again yelled and signaled to slow down. A police officer, as I was walking back, drove down the road slowly. But as he was driving back, he was speeding up the road and I didn't know it was a police officer and I indicated to him to slow down. And he just looked at me and waved and continued to speed down the road. So again, I don't think people are doing it maliciously. I think it's a straightaway and I think that people just feel like they can get to the end of the road quicker if they go faster, no doubt. But with the children playing on the road to enjoy an open street and walk and exercise, I think it's very difficult. Thank you.
Will Sam?
Nobody has their hand raised. There's nobody in the chat. I'm going to do a quick view to see if anybody's waving on camera. Oh, MJ Valley and Vincent Marcantonio has their hand raised as well.
Okay. I saw her hand up earlier, so do Vincent Marcantonio?
Okay.
Nancy Marcantonio? She there? Is Marcantonio?
I'm unmuted. There she is.
I had to unmute. Nancy Marcantonio, 12 Greenwood Lane. After reading The Valley Breeze a couple of weeks ago and seeing the article, proposing a four-way stop sign at the corner of Carlton and Sunny Crest, I took it upon myself to go, you know, hold the neighborhood. And I have to say, the majority of the neighborhood were home, not on vacation. I got 44 people in this neighborhood that don't see a need for a four-way stop sign. Unfortunately, there is one-way street into this neighborhood. There are 45 houses and those 45 houses have to go in and out through Sunny Crest every day. I've lived in this neighborhood for 29 years. My husband's lived in this neighborhood almost his entire life. And at one point, there were 90 children in this neighborhood. They actually filled the bus and there was still no need for a four-way stop sign at that intersection. I think the parents need to be a little more cognitive of teaching their kids the laws of the road. I mean, there are times when... I mean, there are times when people are driving in this neighborhood, and if there's a child on a bicycle, they don't move to the side of the road. They pedal in front of you, seeing if they can pedal as fast as you can drive. You know, so then you stop and you wait for them to finally pull over or reach their destination. But four-way stop signs under control of traffic. I did some research. A four-way stop sign is warranted when there's more than 300 cars an hour that go through an intersection. Or when there have been 10 accidents given out in a 12-month period. Or speeding tickets. I've looked into the police studies. There have never been a speeding ticket given in this neighborhood. So I don't know, you know, unfortunately, the people on Sunny Crest, you bought your houses on the one road that brings people in and out of the neighborhood. And I have the people on Sunny Crest that sign, that don't see a need for the stop sign. So I don't have just the Georgian or Greenwood people. I have Sunny Crest people, and they live at intersections on Sunny Crest, and they don't see a need for a four-way stop sign. So I'm just, thought I'd voice the opinion of the rest of the people in the neighborhood, that people drive by their houses, and when you're standing still in your yard or on the side of the road, and a car drives by at 15 or 20, it appears to be going by fast. But again, how many citations have the police officers given out? It's not just these last weeks that the police have been in our neighborhood. They've been in our neighborhood periodically doing studies. How many citations have they given out? I've looked at police reports, they've given no citations. So I don't see the point of installing a four-way stop sign at that intersection. Thank you.
Thank you. You had one more person, Ms. Scott?
MJ Valley.
Mrs. Valley? Is she out there?
Sorry, I was muted.
That's okay.
Okay, Mary Valley, 13 Sunny Crest. I live at the Second Corner. My kids are grown now. I have experienced people along, you know, as my children grew up, that I thought had sped down the road, and I had stopped people at the time when I feel the neighborhood was more friendly. And a lot of times, like Nancy just said, it seems like people are going faster, but they're not. The gentleman who said that he did the petition, I was standing in my front yard the day he was doing the petition. He saw me, and he walked the other way. The reason why he didn't approach me was one night I was coming up the road, I was doing 22 because I accelerated at the hill, and I was told to slow down. And I'm not really going to go into it, but he told me that I wouldn't have been able to stop if I weren't going so fast. And I said I did stop, because I stopped to talk to him. Now, I feel that he did not go to go around the neighborhood to see the consensus of everybody. But because I live on Sunny Crest now, because there's this whole thing going on about getting stop signs, there were children riding around the neighborhood in motorized vehicles, little toy cars, and all this stuff. There's somebody with a golf cart going around the neighborhood. This is a public street. There's no sidewalks. That's because we're a suburban area. But the whole point is, is we are a public street. We're not a private street. So I feel that the stop sign isn't warranted, but, you know, people are using this as we're living in an association, just driving around and having the freedom. And the third point I wanted to make is that, because he doesn't, the gentleman that started the petition, because he doesn't have a backyard, he's using his front yard. So why can't he fence his property so that there won't be as many balls or whatever else, so his kids won't be running out in the street? If he's not concerned about the neighbors, a fence would control them, so it wouldn't be as bad. I've lived here, like Nancy said, there have not been any problems, and I, my children grew up here, there was never an accident. Nothing like that has ever happened. So I feel that a stop, that the cost should be, the burden should be on him to put up a fence as opposed to putting up a stop sign. Because it's difficult when the school buses are there. You know, we're already going to have a problem because they park on the road around there, because that's where the school bus stops. And then, the person at 5 Sunny Crest, she has Patriot Party footballs every single day, and they're parked on the side of the road. So that means the street's very narrow. So I just don't think that a stop sign would solve the problem. I think it would cause more problems. Thank you.
That's it for the open forum. Giving people a new time. All business, discussion by council, what other action? An update on municipal building review task force. Discussion by council, what other action on recommendation to the task force in regards to going forward at the annex on the police station? Before we really get into discussion on this thing, I think that we need to, I don't want to use the, reset is not the right word, but it's been put out there that the task force is recommending a new police station. And we have said that the town should be looking at a new police station, but we're not telling you to do it right now. What's been presented to you at your request back in March was you wanted an update on what we're doing with the annex. And we gave you an update of what we were recommending, and we gave you a list for discussion. And at that time, we recommended that you go through and actually view the building on your own to see what the conditions were. And that's where we're at now, is that we're looking to see what direction the council wants to go in going forward to take care of the bond, which was approved by the voters, and how we're going to handle that. We want input from the council telling us what direction you want the task force to go in, now that you've seen it, based on what we've given you for information with the possible suggestions, with the letter from the police chief, with the letter from Secosha, and the different deficiencies that were created by the two captains at the time, from the report dated February 10 of 2020. So that's what's on the agenda right now, is we want to know, we're looking to know what direction the council was looking to go in. And I do believe, I saw Mr. Nordstrom out there in the crowd. I don't know if he has anything that he'd like to add before the council weighs in on this. Do you have anything, Mr. Nordstrom, that you'd like to add?
No, I think I'm all set. I can answer questions, but...
Stay on the line, yeah. So what comments does the council have after seeing the building on Saturday? Anybody? Mr. Zulinski?
Hi, I apologize for having technical difficulties, but I'm with Administrator Ozowski. He's kind enough to share his laptop with me, so you may only see half my head, which is a blessing. The building was a mess 10, 15 years ago. If anybody took the time to walk through it over the weekend, they'll see it's deplorable, it's unsafe, actually unsafe. I don't like spending money. I don't like going off of the bond. I'm doubtful the 1.4 is going to handle what we need to accomplish over there. The bottom floor is asbestos flooring. I don't want to say too much, because maybe someone will bring us up on some type of charge of how unhealthy it is. This has to be addressed. And it's something that's going to take time, and a lot more than $1.4 million. Thank you, Mr. President.
Just understand, though, is that we're operating under that mandate of the bond, and that's the amount of funds that we have going forward. If you go back for the four years, as a member of the task force, we've never once asked the council for more money. Not once, and we followed what was available with the funds and what we could do with those funds. So the question that we posed at the last meeting to the council was, we have approximately $1.4 million. We need direction from you on how you'd like us to proceed to go forward with this. We know it's not going to create a new building. We know it's not going to get everything done that we need to get done to bring this building up to code. We just need better direction from the council before the task force goes forward any further. Mr. Ozier?
Yeah, I mean, first, I want to thank Gary and Cynthia for giving us the updated dollars that it's still open with the bond and that financial information. And, you know, I do want to thank the police for allowing us to tour it last Saturday. You know, the building is a mess. It's a given, but, you know, I still believe that we should honor the original bond that was passed. You know, I know this is becoming relatively a hot topic in town. And maybe that's based on the last meeting when it was, you know, I believe you said, Mr. President, that's not a matter of if it's a matter, not a matter of if we need to build one, but when we build it. Personally, I don't think it's fiscally responsible to start, to even talk about building a new one during this given age with COVID and all the uncertainty that's out there. You know, I think we should definitely use whatever money's left in the bond to continue to renovate the building. And we should look to see what other ways maybe we can fund any additional expenditures that might be needed to bring it up to a level that's safe and operable. You know, just doing a quick research out there, I'd look to see what a new police station might cost. I know there's been some $6, $8, $9 million price range. I know East Greenwich, I believe, was around $8 million, and Portsmouth was running around $10,000. They had some mortgages on theirs. So I worry what the cost is, and I have a hard time using just a rough number to make a decision. But, you know, my stance is that we should continue to honor the voter request and look to renovate the building with the bond money, and then if need to, figure out how to cover any additional expenditures.
Anyone else? Oh, go ahead.
Also, but I don't think we should keep deferring longer. I do think that, you know, it's obvious that it's been deferred enough. You know, I think we can continue to have conversations until it gets to a point, and we'll just see what the timeline takes.
I'll reiterate. We're not saying to go ahead and build a new station. We're just saying eventually this town is going to need a new police station. That's what's come out of our report. And we haven't been deferring this project. Number one, we needed to get the new town hall open so that we could vacate the annex. That was part of it. And we needed to know what funds would be left in order to go forward with the project. You could never do these two projects at the same time. You could never do them concurrently. There was nowhere to put the police station, there was nowhere to put the town clerk, the tax collector, the tax assessor, the building inspector. There was nowhere to put them until you had the other piece done. So it was always a phased project. It wasn't never going to be done. So to say that we deferred this on purpose is, it was done, it was done systematically that we needed to do one project before we could go back and look at the other project. And we needed to know what funding would be available to finish that other project. The other project is pretty close to being on budget that was presented of $3.5 million. We're pretty close to being on that budget. Any other council people? Mrs. O'Hara, no?
Well, I'm listening to all this, and after, first of all, I'm very disappointed that more people didn't present themselves. You know, many people say they're concerned, but there are very few people there. As I went through, it amazes me that this town allowed this to happen. You know, I think all of us are frugal, but it's an unhealthy place. As times get worse, the building itself is not conducive to these officers doing their jobs. Do we want to put that much money in? I would go forth and ask an architect, where would be the best place to put this money? Because let me tell you, I don't see many places that don't need something. It saddens me, and of course, at all times where, as far as monies from the state, et cetera, it leaves us in a very difficult position. But like everything else, how long is it going to take to remedy this? And if we are, I ask us to get someone who was gifted in this and go through the needs presented to us by the captain, the officers there, where the most danger is for our officers, and even anyone they bring in into those cells. It's a very difficult decision. But let me tell you, if it's like a lot of things in this town, we haven't taken care of things, and now we're in a quorum. How are we going to handle this with the funds where they are? Maybe people who maybe should have attended and gone through, and people stood outside, you know, offering what they saw. And I think we have an obligation. The people that work in this town, so they are working in a safe and healthy building. And I don't see that here.
That's the object that we're trying to get to on the task force, is to make them have a safe, secure, and healthy building. That's the focus of what we're trying to get done with the remaining funds of this building at this time.
Good luck.
Mr. Ozowski, so you had your hand up?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. I have strong feelings about this, I think, as everyone knows. And the, you know, I spent time today going back to listen to the comments made at the two council meetings back in November of 2016, when the PBIC made its final recommendations to the, you know, what, the council, two prior, two councils ago, three ago, I guess, at this point. And the issue hasn't changed. The ceiling height in the basement of that building is not conducive to modernizing the space. Anything that we will do there will be a Band-Aid. The ceiling height just does not allow us the opportunity to be able to run modern utilities in the space available. What we have, the healthiness of the building, yes, there is asbestos. The air has been monitored, the air is currently safe. The asbestos is in floor tile. That is not the most threatening place that asbestos, not that you want to have it in your building, but it is not the most threatening kind of asbestos. Pipe insulation is generally the kind of material that is most threatening, because every, anytime you go near it, 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 it licks its fibers, and that is the problem. The, if we were to just go in and try to mitigate the asbestos in the building, one of the things it would have to do, you know, the area that is occupied most intensely is the communications area. We have a person in that section, more than one person in that section, around the clock. In order to be able to do that, we'll have to relocate that. The cost of relocating that communications area is substantial. It's not, you're not talking about disconnecting a computer and moving it into the other room. There's antenna connections, there's servers in that room. These things are not things that you move around in a little baby carriage. The cost that we're looking at to put a Band-Aid on this building for the 10 years that the prior PBIC and council members talked about back in 2016, is, in my mind, it was foolish to think about then. It's still foolish to think about. And I'd encourage you, you know, if you go back and listen to some of these things, the, you know, what we were talking, what people were talking about doing back then was making the building, oh God, where's the term? I need to scan my notes, adequate. You know, it just, you really can't, you can't make some of this stuff up. I mean, we have not been respectful of our obligation to support our police officers with a reasonable facility. Now, I'm not looking that suggests that we need a Taj Mahal, as one person wants to call it. We don't need that at all. But we do need a modern police station that at least allows us to be able to compete with our neighboring districts for personnel. allows us to be able to compete with our neighboring districts for personnel. So, you know, I want to suggest to you tonight that, you know, it isn't about starting or stopping. It's about continuing. And we need more information. I think the issue is that that we need to know what is feasible in terms of constructing a new police station on that site and get a a a handle on what the real cost would be as opposed to, well, I think it's five million. I think it's six million. Somebody spent eight million. We need to know what we would need. And then to be able to use that data to make a sensible evaluation as to whether or not we want to go forward, you know, the there are some who would just say cheaper, cheaper, cheaper is always best, best, best. And as I've said in the past, I don't believe those circumstances get us the value that we need in the long run. So I just, I want to make sure that we continue this process. We've got to the point where this committee has looked at all of the issues with a different architect. We're hearing the same thing that we've heard before. We don't have enough money. That's not going to be, it's not going to change by spending a little bit of money on this building. We're gonna, are we determined that we're gonna waste? I don't know if it's $500,000, $800,000, whatever the number is. I mean, you know, the the there was conversation, it was explained by the former chair of the PBIC in the meeting back in November, that the outside wall, the brick facing is separating from the block behind it. The comment made back in 2016 is the cost of repairing all of that is more than the value of the whole building. Not my words, the words of the prior PBIC chair. Go back and listen to yourself to be able to hear what was said again, not just by this committee, that we we don't have enough money to do everything that needs to be done there or the the challenges that are there, but the the prior group and the architects that were guiding them. You know, we can do better than this. Good enough is not the way to get a to to be great. We need to do the right thing, and it is my suggestion to you that you authorize the building, th- this task force, if they're willing to continue to look into development of a plan for a new police station on that property that to understand what the real costs are and take the next three months or so, and it would ultimately be a decision of the next council, but don't stop. Keep the process moving to understand and look at the circumstance instead of just saying, okay, we're gonna we're gonna patch some of these things. That's not the answer to anything here. My two cents, Mr. President. Can I, I need to follow one more point. You know, if we were to tell our police officers and our our entire staff that, well, it's not going to happen now, but we're going to put a referendum question on the ballot in 2022. Not a special election. Let's do the homework that we need to do over the next year and plan to put it on the ballot with good advertising and explanation beforehand and and come to a good decision for the town in Orsman Field.
Mrs. Bonioli?
I have to agree with everything that's been said here. I I have felt with the money that's left over, we're really just putting a Band-Aid on a situation. And we're kind of throwing away the money. It's a school. It's a school that we tried to turn into a police department. It is not a public safety building. I had actually reached out to Gino Gillette and one socket because I had seen an article back in March where they were having a company out of Florida that was going to come up that studies public safety complexes. When I spoke to him last week, COVID happened. And so therefore, that company is not coming out because I was hoping maybe we could piggyback on that and actually have a service that comes in to look at public safety buildings. I would hate to rush to say, all right, let's just throw 900,000 or 1.4 million into this building without really studying it a little bit more. I don't think it makes sense to just throw money to do some cosmetic fixes because that's essentially what it will be. It doesn't turn it into a real police department. And as Mrs. O'Hara was saying, the safety and health, it's also a matter of where prisoners are coming into the building. I can't imagine how safe that is, how we're changing that with the concrete ramp. If it snows, if it's raining, is it slippery? The height of the ceilings in the basement doesn't make sense. I really think we need to study it more with the proper company to give us some insight on what direction to go in. I I I don't know if it's just an architect that can do that for us. But I I don't see just spending the funds that we have now from the bond to try and make some fixes. It's a Band-Aid, and it's not going to work.
Mr. Nordstrom?
I don't think it was me. I think Gary had something to say. He raised his hand.
Well, I I just think that we came before the co- the task force came back before the council looking for direction to go to, so we would know what to do going forward. And bond is specific on, and so the direction that we have is we need to go in there and do renovation work. The only one that could stop that is the council. Now, yeah, I sit on both, I sit on both of them, but we're looking for input from the council on telling us what direction to go in. If you'd like to have a a bigger, better study done in 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 that in those things, that's fine, but you still have issues that you need to address in that building either way. There are things that you still need to address in that building, whether we stay there or leave, and we don't know how long they're going to be there. Even if you passed a bond, even if it was successful, you don't know how long they're going to be there. We don't know any of that, but we do know that there was a a bond approved, and and so we're we're operating under that bond. And we need direction from the council on what you want us to do going forward. And none of that money, then that's the decision that the council will make, to spend none of that money. But we need, we need direction from the council going forward on this thing. That's what we're looking for. We're not telling you, I'm not saying build a new station today. We're not saying that. We're saying you've seen the problems in this building. What do you want to do now going forward, knowing what you have for funds left on that bond? What do you want to do? That's where we're at right now. We've we've we, I've been saying it since last February. We need to look at building a new police station in this town. It's inevitable. We're going to need a new police station. And the fact that you can fix any building that you want in this town. Could you go through that building and fix it so it would be a state of the art police station? You could. At what cost? Far more than tearing it down and building something new. I guarantee you that. And I'm an architect, but I can tell you that much. We need direction from the council going forward. What do you want to do going forward in that building? That's what we need direction on. I know the administrators weighed in saying it's a waste of money to spend 10 cents on that building. We know that we're not going to get a new building. I think that's his his position on it. I understand that. We need direction from the council going forward as a task force. What do you want us to do? That's where we're at right now. Mrs. Wansky?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, we we can't let this languish. It is unhealthy. I don't think there's a person in this town, if they took a tour of that police station, that they would feel comfortable allowing their family members to go work there. That's, I I've seen it. I it was bad four years ago. It's worse now. So if this council were to decide to go forward to hire an architect to take a look at what the needs are, I personally don't believe a million four is going to salvage that building or give it any longevity. It may make it safe, but it does not overcome the operational difficulties and the safety of the people that are detained there, or the safety of our police officers. So I I have no problem making a motion to make this move forward, to take some of that money, hire an architectural firm to tell us exactly, give us a solid figure on how much it would cost, might cost to build a, again, not state of the art, but a functioning, safe police station. And the part of this we'd have to keep in, all of us, who was ever appointed, the next council coming in, this can all stop. This is called terminus with this current council. So we have four more months. I just don't want to see this thing languish. So I I have, I don't have difficulty making a motion to move forward to start an architectural survey to say exactly what it would cost to put in a building, give us some options, and then it would be the next council's decision, because I don't think that it's it's cut in the wire with four months short. So I I believe that we need to have momentum. We need to keep going on this. Now we can talk with factually based with numbers and say, this is what it's going to cost. So I I'm going to be making a motion to do such, Mr. President.
Let's let's get some more discussion going, Mr. O'Yar.
Um, I actually agree with Gary and and Terry. You know, I I think we need more data around this before we can make an informed decision. You know, I I I don't know if an architect would cut it. You know, I would like to see somebody that specializes in what it would take to bring it to build a new police station. If that's the route that this council or the next council wants to go, you know, find out what that cost would be. And then I also think we need to get a better sense as to, you know, since some of these numbers haven't been updated in a while, what would the cost be to do this, to renovate that building fully? Not just put a Band-Aid on it or patch it. I know there's, we can't change basement heights and we can't do that stuff. But to get a 2020 estimate of a full renovation, you know, I know it's more than the 1.4 million dollars that's left in the bond, but find out how much, how much we're off between what's left in the bond and what is actually needed to fully renovate to make it more state of the art. And then from there, we can then make an informed decision comparing the two. And whatever's the fiscally responsible, whatever the way that that council wants to go, that that's the decision, but at least all the information is there on the table, and we're not just looking at numbers from one and old numbers from 2014, 16, et cetera, for the other.
I see, I see you, Claire. Just to answer your question, Mr. O'Yar, is to show you how that you you kind of like hitting it, you're not, you haven't hit it right on the head, but you're getting to part of the point of this process. When they did the original study to come up, develop numbers, they were based on numbers in 2013. They sold the bond in 2016. They never carried escalation cost forward.
Oh, I get it. Yeah, I get it.
They went out there, and I pointed this out to the previous council. So the day that it went out to bid, you were already over 12% behind on your numbers. You already had numbers that would, that it escalated 12% than what you thought they were. That's, those are the issues that you face. So even if you get numbers in 2020, you sell it in 2022, if you don't carry the escalation forward, you're in the hole again. That that was one of the issues uncovered as we went through this process, is that they had numbers from 2013 and they and they didn't follow the thing saying you need to add escalation for the next two or three years of 6%. So when they actually floated the bond or actually put the bond out, the question, they didn't carry that escalation forward. So they were already behind 10 to 12% that they had. And then when you actually went out and got actual hard numbers, two years later, you were even further behind.
And and that's why I think you need to have updated numbers, you know, then you can make what's the best return on investment for the town. And, you know, I I don't think it's a decision that I think it's been alluded to, that it it can't be made in three months. You know, and I think that's why we can get updated numbers. It would be really beneficial in the long run.
Whether you, whether you want to build a new station or not, can't be done in three months. Whether you want to do patient work in there, can be done in three months. That's that's the issue. I see you, Paul, but Claire, get her hand up before that.
Uh, you know, I I agree with Mr. Zowsky. That that and Terry, that building was, when it was put up, it was a a small neighborhood school. You could tell by the basement, by given bathrooms, the way the ramps were. I'm telling you right now, any money put into that school was a total waste. There is no way in this God's earth with the building as it with years ago, wiring, one wire up, one wire down, but what they need for communication, et cetera, cannot be done. Do we want to make it look nice till we come up with something? I think it's wasting the money. I- if we have to hold this off or at least start something up, but it's always holding things off and let's make it look nice, but it's not functional. So as far as everything Gary put forth is what it is. Paul wanting to start something going is what it should be. Many of us may not be around, but it doesn't mean I won't be sitting in that front row, making sure things are done. Still a taxpayer in this town.
Mrs. Wansky?
Oh, what what's that old expression? Put lipstick on a pig? It it it's not going to make it safer. It's going to give a false feeling of oh, we've cleaned it up. There's, li- listen. I'm going to go back to what I said earlier. I'm going to make a motion that we move forward and position the next town council to make this decision with viable information for 2020, possibly into 2021, inflation built, and we can do this, or then it'll be the decision of the next town council. I've heard great, you know, we're all concerned. But we need to keep moving forward. Let's get some momentum on this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Zowinski, are you making this a motion?
We can, if I repeat?
I believe the administrator wants to make a point.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead, Gary.
The one other thing that I've looked into and compiled for you, I don't know if, Lillian, can you put up the the total debt status that we have?
Yes.
Please.
The Fund 051 that you sent me today?
I don't, not sure. It's the the
No, it's the other one, Lily.
The other one? Okay.
The one they sent you around four o'clock.
Got it.
Thank you. As I I I alluded earlier, I mean, it, going back and and listening to the the details of the meeting in in 2016, it's it's Groundhog Day, folks. We're, you know, we're four years in and we're discussing the same things. And, you know, we've had architects and engineers tell us we've never had enough money for these projects. Go back and listen to the 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 tape of the meeting from 2000, November of 2016. You'll hear it yourself. Not from me, not from any of us, hear it from the PBIC that they, you know, they never had enough money to do all the projects. We've whittled this down now. We followed the recommendation that the PBIC made at that time. Do the Kendall Dean building well. It has been done well. And then look what, determine what you can do with the the annex. I wanted to point out to everyone that, you know, what's on the screen in front of you is a a running total of of our total debt status from the Moody's reports 2011 to 2019. And the estimated status of our total debt as of 2020, that is in the bottom, the bottom number in blue. We've gone from, i- in 2011, we had total debt principle of $36,338,000 and some change. And our net debt, direct debt divided by operating rev- total operating revenues was 1.1. We are now at a circumstance where, well, last year, we're at $30 million, 20% less, and a a net direct debt over operating revenues of 0.66. Our current circumstance will be, or is expected to be, a $26 million, uh, $26,726,000 and a a net direct debt, operating revenues number that's going to be even lower. It doesn't mean that I'm looking to spend money. I just want to make it clear that you have the resources available to be able to do so. I do understand the current circumstance as it relates to COVID and the number of people that are out of work. But I I encourage that you can't let that be the reason that you don't do the right thing for this town, that ultimately value with the dollars that you spend. So I will encourage that the the motion that the councilman has made to go forward with getting the information we need to be able to understand what it is it would cost and how it could be done on that on that site. Thank you. Thank you.
Is there a motion made?
Yes.
Can you repeat that motion?
Do you want me to, or do you want to repeat it, Mr. Zolinski?
Oh, no, please, Lillian. I, I may want to check you, because I hear what I said.
I have Mr. Zolinski making a motion to hire an architect to figure out how much it would cost for a new building.
Yeah, that, that's kind of choppy, but of course, I, you know, we're going to look at scope of work. We're going to look, there's a lot that has to go into it. But it's a simple motion that we move forward and we ask the building committee to set up the parameters and then we can go out for an architectural report, once we have RFPs come in.
Is there a second?
Second with discussion.
Second by Mr. Oger and Mrs. O'Hara. Mr. Oger.
I also would like to see what a full renovation would be like as well. You know, we just talked about it. We're using new numbers in 2020 than what we used in the past. To have a, for the next council to make an informed decision, you're going to need both sides to be able to really gauge what is the better return on investment here. You know, just to say what the price out of a new police station is, that, that's great, but that's only one side of the story. You're still going to be comparing to old numbers that obviously haven't been kept up with inflation. And so I would like to see that motion amended to include what else, what, what would the cost of a full renovation be to bring it up to more state of the art in the existing building as well? Just so you have an apple to apple comparison or numbers wise, you have updated numbers to compare.
I'm, I'm asking.
Go ahead, Mrs. O'Hara.
I'm asking for that not to be included because we're going back to the same thing. It's an old building, it's inadequate, and it can't contain and do what technology demands today.
That's, that's irresponsible to, to be excluding that personally. I, I think if you want it, well, all taxpayers of this town. And I agree that they, the building is unsafe and it needs to be, it needs attention. But all I'm asking for is to have the full transparency of what the cost are going to be to fully renovate and what the cost is to build a new police station. You know, if, if you come in and a new police station is $12 million, but you can make the building state of the art for $6 million, well, you're going to make the building state of the art for $6 million, you would think. There is, there is a burden here that eventually will be passed to the taxpayer. And this, I agree with, with Gary that this is, this is probably going to be on the 2022 ballot. If not, who knows when? But this is, you need the data. I work in data. You can't have one side and say, you know, that's the way it needs to go. Otherwise, don't even get the data and just say, build a new police station. It's fiscally irresponsible not to get the full renovation cost and you will not be able to get to where you want to be in terms of an informed decision without having all sides. It shouldn't be that hard to say, yes, let's include it. What are we afraid of?
No, I, I agree with you that you need to get both sides of it. You need to get, what is the cost to do a renovation of the building? Which, which, which is what this discussion should be based on. We want input from the council, the task force does. What level of renovation do you want? You mentioned state of the art, right? I wouldn't be looking at a state of the art to do a state of the art. I would be looking to bring this building more specifically up to code, which is a big difference. If you, if you went through there and you looked at some of the things, you look where they, where they were processing in the BCI room, where they're processing evidence, where they're storing evidence, where they're storing weapons, where there's, it's just inadequate. And so you need to bring it up to code. Never, never mind, we don't need a state of the art police station. We need to bring it up to code. And so my question to, to the people making the motion is, number one is, the, look at a new station and look at renovating this station. But to what level do you want that renovation to look like? Or do you want different levels of renovation? We can do, we can probably get that done. Second part of that question is, who do you want to do it? Do you want to go out with an RFP and hire somebody new? Or do you want to work with an architect that's already familiar with these buildings? That's your call. Mr. Zolinski.
Mr. President, I'm comfortable with staying with it. We have to go out to bid. But the current architect is very familiar. The bid process has to take its step. I don't think, definitely, there's no state of the art remodel going to happen over there. I'm wondering if we're even going to be able to bring it up to standard safety features with the, the level of the buildings, exiting the building to come in another entrance. It's an old school. It's not a police station. I don't want to, you know, it's, we're not making it the J. Gahover building. We're trying to give it a safe building for the police officers, the, the, the people to come in contact with. Okay, okay, hang on. I'm one for consensus. If it's going to take that we look at remodeling it, but Mr. Vaden was correct in saying to what, to what level. I'm doubtful we can get it to a standard of safety and functionality that we need. But I'm, I'm going to amend my motion. I'm going to retract my motion and I'll amend it to say such. So I'm retracting my motion, Mr. President.
So is the motion amended or withdrawn?
It's withdrawn, I'm retracting it. And then I'll make it to stay.
Is there a second withdrawal?
I withdraw.
You, you as well, Mrs. O'Hara, you both seconded.
Yeah, I withdraw.
Okay.
Mr. President, so the new motion would be to look at it two ways. One, to build a, a new police station. Two, to look and see if the current existing conditions can be brought up to what would be considered police standards and safe and health standards. So that, that's my motion.
Is there a second? I'll second for discussion. You, you need to have.
Well, hang on, I'm surprised Mr. Oger didn't want to go that way.
You, you need to have, you need to have something to compare it to. You need, because you may, we may find, I don't think so, but we may find that renovating would be the way, you, you can renovate any building that you want. It's the what cost do you want to spend to renovate the building? We could go in there and take that building, believe me, we could take that building and go through.
On stilts.
Make it a state of the art palace for the police department. At what cost? You'd be surprised. That's not what we're looking to do though. So we do need to have, you do need to have something to look at to say, this is the cost to renovate, this is the cost to build new. You need to have that comparison. You just need to have it, it's common sense.
I was a little taken back that once I made the motion, there was no second, so.
Can I, Mr. Vaden, in other words, we're going to use Secoche again?
I'm not saying that. I asked, I asked you folks, do you want to use the same architect? Or do you want to do an RFP and bring in people? There are firms out there that, that strictly do municipal police stations. There are firms out there that do just school buildings. They're, they're out there all over the place. They, they're not just general architects. I've been satisfied with, with what Mark has provided for us. Do we want to get someone else looking at this? I'm not opposed to that. I'm not opposed to that. I'm asking the council, we're here getting direction from the council. And yeah, I sit on both seats, but I'm kind of representing the task force right now that we need direction from you folks on how you want us to proceed going forward now. Now that we've finished or we're close to finishing the town hall and we're going to begin the annex police station, we want clarification on what you want us to do. Mrs. Baranioli.
I would prefer to put it out to an RFP, RFQ, and just to hear from other architects. And at the same time, if anyone was interested in contacting the Center for the Public Safety, that was the name of the company when Socket was going to bring up here. And in the email that Gino and I went back and forth, apparently the cost was they were going to charge the city for the plane fare, lodging, and a rental car. I don't know if there was more to it than that, but this is their specialty, public safety complexes. It's another option. I think at the time for one Socket, it was running around $1,700, $1,800 to do it. But I would, I would rather see an RFP, RFQ put out, just to get some other input.
We ju, we just want direction. I think, I think you agree on that. We're looking for direction. We want to know what you want us to do. Am I correct? Mr. Nordstrom?
Yes, that's correct.
So if, if, go ahead, Mrs. Walensky.
Right. Mr. President, I made a motion that we approach it from two angles. One is to see the, the building of a new police station and also to take a look at it, to renovate it, to make it a safe functioning and bring it to standard police station. I'm going to make that motion again because I, I didn't hear a second.
No, I seconded it. That's what we're discussing. I seconded it.
Okay.
No, I did second that motion. That's what we're discussing. The clarification I'm looking for, and I, and I got one answer from Mrs. Baranioli is, we want to do a separate RFP to see what's out there available to us. Mr. Oger.
First, to Councilman Zowinski, I, when you said I was shocked that I didn't second it, I thought you were still going to say something. It seems a little light in terms of the motion. But I personally would like to see it open to an RFP as well. Not to say that Secoche hasn't done a good job. But I think that, you know, it's better to have diversity and thought in this process. And, you know, I, I would like to see what else is out there and, you know, get some more instinct and get some better insight as to what is needed.
Thank you, Mr. Oger, for the clarification because I, I did mention that we should go for our request for polls is right up front. So thank you for, thank you.
So just to clarify, Ms. Scott, there's, there's a motion in a second to go forward with an RFP seeking a firm to do a study on renovating existing station to bring it to standards or to look at building a brand new station, correct? Any other discussion?
Gary, have anything to add to that?
No, that, that's a rational step forward in my mind, folks, completely.
Hearing nothing, roll call vote.
Mrs. Baranioli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara? Mr. Oger?
Yes.
Mr. Zolinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vaden?
Yes. We'll make sure that the task force is aware of, of our next steps and we will begin working on it at our next meeting. Next item, discussion by Council Board of Interaction on escrow agreement with High Rocks 2 LLC for properly located, that one Tupperware drive. I had this put on there. This is old business from before. Is Mr. Igliozzi out there somewhere?
Yeah, he's there.
Is he out there somewhere?
He has his camera and microphone off, but he's still signed on.
Okay. I know that, I know that Mr. Hurley's out there, the attorney.
Hello, everybody.
Saw him out there.
Hello, council members.
Hello. Can you get David?
I, I've got it.
Can we get the agenda back on the screen?
It is, I put the new item up. Do you not see it?
No, I was seeing the old screen.
I'm still seeing part from Gary.
Mr. Igliozzi.
Thank you.
Where is Mr. Igliozzi?
Sorry, I got, I got Lily on the other line, Mr. President.
There he is.
I got it, Mr. President.
There you are. You have submitted a, a draft of the Development Security Deposit Agreement based on what was discussed previously, maybe at a council meeting. Do you want to just give a quick update of what this is so that everyone is aware of it?
What, what my concern was, and I think the council was concerned, at least what I could gather, plus the concern of the administrator and the town planner, was that this agreement was a standalone agreement only, had no impact on the planning board's authority to approve the project and/or authority of the zoning board. It is strictly an agreement between the applicant and the town that if the applicant is successful with getting final plan approval from the planning board and then post $480,000, the town will release two town building permits that are being held right now. And if the applicant then goes on and builds the new 38 units and has 18 units of affordable houses, affordable units contained within that development, then the money will be returned. If the applicant does not build those units, then the $480,000 will be forfeited to the town as a payment in lieu of affordable housing. And the question was, that remained was how long did the council want the town to wait for the applicant to meet its obligation to complete that process? So the one blank in this agreement was, the applicant is looking for five years before the money could be defaulted and the, there's some indication they would agree to four. So that's kind of the range that the applicant is, is in. Obviously, I, I would like less than that, but there is, both the administrator and the planner seem to be, I don't want to speak for them, but they seem to be okay with that range. But I wanted to leave it to the council. That's what this agreement does.
So ba, basically to, kind of like boil it down and make it really simple, this security deposit, right, right now, they have, High Rocks has never been given final approval by the planning board.
Correct. Correct. They have never been given final approval.
And so as part of their final approval, they needed to create 10% affordable housing, which they didn't do. So this agreement is trying to address that 10% affordable housing.
That's correct.
They still need to go forward and get planning and zoning board approval on this project, the, the 38 apartments. When they get that approval, they would put $480,000 into an account, an escrow account held by the town, at which point now they have approval for the project, they've escrowed the funds. The town would release the two certificates of occupancy on those two condominiums that they're holding up for High Rocks right now. At which point, they, with approvals, they could begin to build those apartments. And as they hit certain benchmarks, they, some of that funds would be released, correct?
Correct. Every time they get six units built, they would get a third of the money.
Okay. If they don't get approval from the planning and zoning board, we're all the way back at square one. So this, this is just one piece of the, of the puzzle of getting approval to meet that 10% housing, correct?
That's correct, Mr. President. It's just one piece.
One has nothing to do, well, one kind of does because they have to get approval before this, this is a component of getting approval on the project. But it doesn't take effect until they get approval.
That's correct.
Is everyone following that? So with that, is there a motion to approve the Development Security Deposit Agreement between the Town of North Smithfield and High Rocks 2 LLC? Is there a motion to approve the Development Security Deposit Agreement? Do we want to make a motion to approve it? Do you all understand what we're talking about? Can you hear me? Am I muted, Lily?
You are not.
We don't want to go forward with this?
Mr. President?
Mr. Zolinski.
May I admonish the applicant a little bit before I contemplate making the motion? You know, I, I was, thank you for the packet to the town court that sent that out with the minutes of the planning board master plan review. Preliminary plan did not mention the number of units. And I think everybody was assuming it was still going to be 120. And then they gave administrative authority to the planner at that time to sign off once all the contingencies were. And then they gave administrative authority to the planner at that time to sign off once all the, uh, uh, contingencies were, were, uh, addressed. I'm really at a loss for words how we went from 120 units to 128 units being constructed there. At some point, I'm missing some minutes with the planning board reviewed it and allowed them to go an extra eight units. Uh, the, the other piece of this, now they're coming before, is looking to put in another 38 units, and many of those are gonna be low to moderate, uh, affordable housing. And it's all gonna be kind of, um, centrally located. It's not gonna be just, had this been handled properly, then maybe we could've had a, a few more affordable housings dispersed throughout the development. I, I'm a little, these are people's homes. I mean, these people paid a lot of money to buy their homes here, and now they're seeing additional units being proposed. Uh, that's gonna be entirely left to the planning board to come up with that decision. But I'm, I'm dismayed that, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, how the extra eight units come to be, and now we're going to put money and put it, uh, on hold for them until they, uh, meet every six, uh, to meet every six affordable housing to give them partial return on that, uh, that, uh, cash charity bond, so. I'm in no rush to make a motion to approve this. That's just where I'm at right now. Uh, there's further dialogue among our, our colleagues.
Well, we're, we're here because the current town planner uncovered that this project had never been finally approved. They had, they had the, um,
Preliminary.
Well, I guess, whatever they call it.
Yeah.
Had a preliminary plan approval, but they never had final plan approval. And so, somewhere it fell through the cracks. I'm not here to lay blame. We're trying to rectify that and get back to the point that we have 10% affordable housing. This is coming to us from the planning board and the town planner as their recommendation on how to resolve that and get the, and, and try to get this thing done. Um, we, we've worked with, with the solicitor to come to language that is in the town's best interest, I believe. Um, it was worded differently previously. That was submitted by Attorney Hurley. We didn't agree to that. We had the solicitor draw it up, so it was favorable to the town. Um, I believe he's done that. So, we can all sit there and, and point and complain that something happened 13 years ago, and it wasn't clearly spelled out, but we're here now trying to rectify the problem. That's what we're trying to do tonight. Um, this is trying to address that. It's what we directed the solicitor do two months ago. So, that's, that's where we are. Mrs. Zawinski.
Ms. President, Mr. Hurley, uh, you're representing your client, of course. Do you have anything you wish to add?
Uh, yes, I, I, I think I wanna, um, piggyback a little bit on what the president, uh, just reiterated, that this is, this is a development that my client is proposing to rectify a problem. We're not here to litigate how the situation occurred and why it occurred and what transpired over the many years to get to where we are. But what my client has put together in this, uh, proposal, this additional development, is a, a solution to a very complicated problem. Obviously, it, these are condominiums. They're not rental units. They're not going to come up to be available to turn them into low to moderate income affordable housing units any time in the near future. This has been a unique situation, um, that came available, uh, in which one of the commercial tenants have vacated the premises. Um, allowing there to be a substantial space in the development to allow for this proposed expansion of the 38 units. Uh, one of the issues that was before the planning board, and this was more when there was the standalone project, and I don't wanna confuse people with more information, was this idea of having, uh, a, a singular location with the affordable housing unit that doesn't necessarily go along with the, the, the purpose of this, um, uh, those laws, but what, uh, what we have here is 38 units. And so that it, you know, it would be, you know, it would be a mixed area. There would be actually more, um, uh, market rate units as opposed to moderate to affordable housing units. And also to kind of give everyone a bit of a explanation of what this project consists of. It's a very well-done, uh, uh, development, but while these were actually being sold, uh, 10, 11 years ago, they were actually sold at rates that were comparable or even less than or equal to what was considered the low to moderate income, um, uh, rates at the time. Uh, and because of the housing market that existed in 2009, 2010, uh, as everyone will remember, it was a very depressed market at the time, especially for condominiums. A- and that's where they just weren't being able to be sold. So, uh, these units were actually kind of sold at that price, but they, that's just a little bit of history. But tonight, we're here, this is a unit that, it, this is a standalone agreement. It's not really part of the process in which to get the additional 38 approved. This is an agreement that we've worked out with the town, which would help with some building costs to move forward. I think it gives the town, uh, certainly a significant amount of security to make sure that the 12 are built. I worked a lot with, uh, Attorney Igliozzi, uh, to make sure that the language comfortably expels out exactly what the town thinks that this agreement should be. I don't think there was really any disagreement between the parties. It was simply some wording, um, that needed to be clarified, cuz this agreement, obviously, that's going to be, uh, construed five, uh, you know, five, four to five years from now. And we wanted to make sure that this was a credit, that my client, if they failed to build the 12 units on time, uh, that they, but the town could take the $480,000. Um, and my client would get a credit. It did not and will not release my client from the obligation to provide the 10%. And we spelled that out in these examples. If they don't build anything, they're still going to be short two units. They will still be in violation of the, the, um, the, the ordinance, um, so they would have to find a way to do that. Now, obviously, two units are a lot easier to do than, say, 10 or 12 units. But if they build them all, then they get the money back, and the town gets, actually will end up getting more units, affordable units than it, uh, than when we started this process, which is obviously good for the town. So, this is a complicated situation. Given the nature of the development at High Rocks, that is a condo, and I think there's benefits to both sides here. Um, and again, we're not here to, to hash over what things and how things happen, but we're trying to look forward and come up a solution that works for, you know, all of the parties involved, including the condo owners, um, as well, because, you know, they certainly have a stake in everything that's going on there too. And, uh, certainly, we're not looking to put any violations on the project as a whole, which would, uh, impede their abilities to sell or mortgage their, their condominiums. So, uh, if there are any questions, I certainly would love to answer those, um, uh, but I have nothing further to present at this time. I think we went over pretty fair detail last time.
Mr. Zawinski. Thank you, Ms. President. Uh, Mr. Igliozzi, this is, uh, imposing this to you. With the housing market in a state of flux, one never knows. I'm sure they're not gonna start remodeling a mill complex unless they feel that the housing, market's going to start to be solid again. Is there a language that can be added to say that, regardless of what happens, if they build condominiums and, and the market tanks, is there a language that can prohibit them from leasing those apartments, those condominiums as apartments? Mr. Igliozzi?
He appears to be muted.
Oh.
There he is.
I'm sorry, Ms. Chairman.
Mrs. Zawinski had a question for you.
Yes, yes, sir, Mr. President.
Solicitor, did you hear my question?
I didn't. I'm sorry. I, I was having trouble with my computer, and I was playing with it, and I couldn't hear. I'm sorry.
Oh, a lot of computer problems this evening, that's for sure. Uh, so basically, uh, you know, I'm gonna try to paraphrase, cuz I don't think I could verbatim what I just asked you. My concern is, uh, with the real estate market being somewhat in flux, never knowing what's going to happen, of course, the developer won't start to develop if the forecasting, says it's gonna be dismal, they're gonna wait for a time to develop. So, if by chance, the developer builds these condominiums, these homes, and the market, uh, tanks, it's not a solid market to sell it. Is there language that could protect the, the other residents and, in their homes over there that are paying mortgages? Protect them, uh, so that these units cannot be leased, rented, or any of that? So, in essence, I, I wanna make sure that the, uh, the values of the people that are paying mortgages over there stays intact, and that these other, uh, proposed condominiums will be that. Condominiums, not rental properties. Does that feel?
There, to answer your question, there, I'm sorry, somebody. There, there is no language that affect. That's not what this agreement was designed for. This agreement is strictly about a deposit for release of two permits that will be forfeited if the development of affordable 10% housing is not constructed. It's good, it's got nothing to do with the, the development conditions, uh, uh, established, um, by the planning board, but in addition to that, I would say this, uh, it would be difficult for the planning board to mandate one type of housing, rental or condominiums. That's a difficult. A condominium, uh, is a form of ownership. It is not a, it's not a, uh, you can't mandate it at the planning board level. It's, it's, it's the units that you mandate or control. It's not the form of ownership. So, I, I, when you get to the form of ownership, I can tell you, we couldn't put that in this agreement, even if we wanted to.
If I can, if I can, Paul, to help answer your question, though, these are building apartments. This, this proposal was before the planning board. Now, it's strictly apartments, not condos. They're all rental properties. All 38 are rental properties.
That's true as well.
I saw you had your hand up, Mrs. Bonnelli.
No, I was going to say, I had also understood that they were purely apartments. They're rentals. They are not to be purchased. Um, my other question is, um, while we're looking to put a timeframe on here, and the discussion is four years, five years, what exactly is that timeframe? When they need to start, when they need to hit the first 12 units? What are we looking at here?
The, um, the, the trigger mechanism for them to receive money, uh, is not only construction of the unit, but also that it's approved by the monitoring agent of the state, and the, uh, agent not only approves it, but indicate that it's occupied. So, if they don't, if they were to get six of them occupied and approved by the state monitoring agent, they would get $160,000 back. They would get another six, they would get another $160,000 back, and if they would get the final six, they would get the final $160,000 back. If at any point in time, they don't complete one, two, or three of those steps before the time runs out, the money is forfeited.
And what is the timeframe?
The developer, the developer's looking for five years, but indicated that they would agree to four. The planner and the administrator didn't seem to have a problem with four years, uh, but it's, it's five, four to five years, but I think it's a couns- it's a council decision. How long you wanna have the trigger, the money, um, subject, you know, what would be the moment in time when the money is forfeited? By analogy, let me just say this. By analogy, if, if a developer came, and I, I hate to bring this up because it's gonna confuse the issue, but if a developer were to come to town today and ask for a, a comprehensive permit to build low or moderate income housing, state law would say they would have a five-year timeframe to construct it. And so, that's where the four, five-year timeframe, right? If he was a new developer coming to town with a new project, he'd have five years. But this is the developer trying to make up for, with a new develop, make up for a prior development, so we were trying to shorten that period.
Okay, and that would be for the completion of the entire project?
Right. I mean, but if you, yes, that's correct, but if between now and then, he got six units completed and approved, he would get 100, a third of his money back. Every time he completes, it's if he didn't com- complete one or all of them by that deadline, then he would lose whatever money is still on deposit.
Okay.
If I, if I can, if I can, Mrs. Bonnelli, simple question, David.
Yes.
Needs to be completed in four or five years based on what the council decides.
Exactly.
That's, that's the issue, correct? It needs to be completed in four or five years, depending on what the council chooses as a, as a term of this project.
That's correct.
The, the project needs to be completed by, within five years. That answers the question, correct, Mrs. Bonnelli?
Or three years, yes. Thank you.
So, with all of that discussion, is there a motion to approve a Development Security Deposit Agreement between the Town of North Smithfield and High Rocks 2 LLC? This is Bonnelli.
I'll make a motion to accept it with a three-year timeframe. I think this has been gone on long enough. So, I'm looking at three years.
Motion by Mrs. Bonnelli, Mrs. O'Hara.
I second it.
You second? Mr. Rozier seconds. Any other discussion?
May I be heard?
I was just, I was just gonna ask you if, you gotta understand that they're making a motion, but I, I wanted to ask you, when the discussion, what is your opinion of the three years? Because if it's not doable to you, then, then this agreement really is, is no good.
Uh, it would be very, very difficult for my client to do three years. Realistically, it's probably would be within that timeframe that they could get it done. Um, it would be very, very tight. And I guess what I, I wanted to stress, and I want, it's more for just the educational purpose of the council is this is really a side agreement. This was something that we approached, um, the town planner with an idea that we could, the town had been holding the certificates of occupancy and had issued a cease and desist on a standalone property. And i- it was a, a proposal of a way to get the town to feel that what it was holding those as security, to make sure that my client does what it's supposed to. A way for the town to feel that they were secured enough in releasing those, but still was holding on to something. This by no means is any way, in a way affecting the, the actual approval of the 38 project. It's a standalone agreement. So, if the, the motion is for three years, I would say like, what I've been advised by my client is they simply would probably not move forward with this agreement, okay? Because that would be, it would probably be too much of an unlikeliness that they would be able to build those in the three-year period of time. Uh, it wouldn't really be feasible, so they just would not really enter into this agreement and just allow the town to probably hold on to the two COs that it's currently holding on and move forward with the application as if this agreement really didn't place. So, I think we're, we're trying, five years would be ideal, as Attorney Igliozzi stated, that's what a new developer getting. We understand the town's need to try to rectify this problem as quickly as possible. We are saying four years, especially in light of the construction concerns that are ongoing, whether materials are gonna be available. God forbid there be any stoppage in construction. I know Mr. Valinsky said, said my client would probably wait until the market looked better. My client's ready to go. They've been ready to go for about six months now, um, you know, hoping to get this whole thing through. They really do wanna move this project along as fast as they possibly can. And I was told, you know, because Attorney Igliozzi said they wanted, the town wanted to do as less as possible, I really think four is the bare minimum we could get here, and if it's, if the, if the council approves something less, then likely what's going to happen is this is just going to, this agreement, as I said, is not necessary to the whole process. It probably would just be left at the table and not executed, um, and we just move forward. The town will continue to hold the COs. And, and that's good security for the town. Frankly, I think this is better. You guys are getting much more with this than you, uh, security than that you have with the two COs that the town's currently holding. So, I think this is very beneficial to the town, so I'd like to see it to have the best opportunity it can, so I do really ask that you consider four years. Thank you.
Mr. Kravitz has his hand up.
Mr. Kravitz. I can't see him, that's why.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes. My question is, is if the developer should not enter into the agreement and they walk, if you will, how would that affect, maybe this is not our problem as a town, maybe it is, but how would that affect the title of that property going forward? It's got an incomplete record, if you will, it wouldn't have final approval. It's more of a title question, but I'm just curious.
Can I respond? Mr. Kravitz, my client's not interested in walking away from the project, just this agreement. I think if it became three years, then my client would think that likely is they would not be able to complete it and therefore forfeit it. They'd like to see the whole thing come to completion. My client, by no means should, what I said suggests by any means, my client is planning to walk away from the proposed 38 units that it wants to build there, it still wants to do that. I'm just saying that if the council says three years to build, then that this development security agreement is probably too unlikely to be completed within three years. So my client would just allow things to stay as they are. The town can hold the COs, or as long as the town wants to hold the COs, I would think they would be released once my client gets the 10%. And that would be, continue to be the security the town is holding for now. As the project hopefully, you know, moves through zoning, moves through finding, planning for finality, and it gets approved that way, it would just be without this, you know, security deposit agreement. Which I think is very beneficial to the town. I mean, I think the town is getting more security here than it currently has with the two year, the two COs. You know, you're getting $480,000, you're having the ability to get $40,000 per of the 12 that were supposed to be built. And I think there are a lot, Attorney Agliozzi did an excellent job making sure that the town is well protected here and that my client's obligation to the ordinance is not forgiven and spells out very clearly really what would happen in many of this, all of the scenarios that could develop over the four years.
Mr. Kravitz, maybe you can answer this because it kind of goes to your question. If we don't get this agreement done, the original, the preliminary plan said they needed to create 10% housing, they do not have final plan approval. Which goes to your question, I believe. How can they be occupying and running this development when they never had final approval on it? Is that what your question kind of gets to?
Well, no, only because Mr. Hurley clarified it, they would still move forward. That the town would be allowed to keep those two, we'd hold the COs and those two units to have some leverage so they don't walk, and they would proceed trying to obtain the approvals to construct the 38 rental units with the 18 affordable.
If I may add, Mr. President, I think Mr. Kravitz does bring up a very good point. If this all falls apart, and I'm talking about everything, there would be a significant title issue with the whole project of where everything stands. You'd have a lot of people potentially stuck in the middle, that's all the condo owners, where the title really would be. Because, and Mr. Kravitz, I've talked about this, it likely would be a violation on the entire project, which means there would be cloud on title on all of those condo owners.
The other thing I wanted to bring up, Mr. Zelinski brought it up about subleasing, obviously being a condominium, whether the existing one, the new ones would be apartments. But that would be, the condominium statute would be the place where there's controls there, I would imagine.
And if I may add, that's a good, Mr. Kravitz, I'm glad you brought that point back up. The problem too, if we were to try to mix in rental or leasing units within the main building, that wouldn't really, I don't think you could do that with the existing condo declarations because there are calls for all kinds of those to be all condos, not rental units. Why the new project can be rental units is that it's part of the commercial condo association docs, which can be amended, much easier. So that's why this is being allowed, and they're rental units because rental units are better for this type of affordable housing structure as what was evident with what happened here in 08, 09, and 2010, when these came on the market. Condos in affordable housing really don't work because the price points are just too close. And a buyer certainly is willing to pay a little bit more of the same for a unit that's not deed restricted. And that's what really happened here, they just could not sell affordable housing. Because again, there were market units at the same level, all of them were. That's, that's the history of how we are where we are.
Do you have anything else, Mr. Kravitz? So we have a motion in a second. But the applicant has said that three years will not work for them. To the maker of the motion in the second, wish to amend it to make four years.
I will amend it to four years.
Does the second amend ask for four years?
Yes.
And yours, Mrs. O'Hara?
I thought I was the one that did the seconding, but that's fine, he can take it.
No, that's, I'm asking you, the main maker amended hers, would you amend the second?
Yes.
And Mr. Rozier as well, because you both seconded, correct?
Yes, yes, I, yeah.
It would be a four-year agreement. Mr. Zelinski.
Mr. President, I have to apologize again because of my technical difficulties trying to get online. I did not hear any of the open forum public statements. Did anybody from High Rocks have comments prior to my arriving at Town Hall?
No, no comments were made at all.
Do we know if those folks, how many folks checked the agenda? I mean, honestly, I was wondering if any reach out was done to Mike DeBryce, Mr. DeBryce? I wonder if anybody reached out to him to tell him, or any members of the condo association? This is, these are their homes. I'm just curious if they, you just told me they didn't have a chance to weigh in this evening.
But wasn't he always?
Can I, I can represent that they do now have counsel, they've hired Frank Lombardi. They've been very much involved in every step of the way. I know I'm opposing counsel, I can tell you, frankly, most of their concerns have not been the existence of the affordable housing. Their issues have been more with parking and not with the existence of any affordable housing. They've been very adamant about the number of parking spaces that are currently there and issues of whether there are certain designations with that. It's all before the planning board, it's been discussed countless times at countless hearings. But there really has never been any strong sentiment from any of the condo owners against this project or the prior projects you put in the affordable housing.
But Mr. Zelinski, if they were opposed to the project, that would be the planning board's purview, not our purview. That would be done at the planning board meetings, where they would be opposed. This is an agreement to try to get the town into compliance with the 10% affordable housing. This is only one piece of it. The applicant still has to go before the planning and zoning board to get approval. This is just a component that's protecting the town's 10% interest or the 10% affordable housing. That's what this agreement is for. If people are against the affordable housing development, that's a planning board zoning board issue, not a council issue, not at this time.
Mr. President, if I could to Mr. Agliozzi, if he's there.
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can, loud and clear, thank you. My concern is the residents, current residents that are there now. Yes, from what I'm hearing, we don't have a finalized plan. What does that do? Does that cloud their titles? And how can we, how can we correct that? Will this help us correct that?
I think if the applicant succeeds in getting its application approved, that's one way to correct it. Or the applicant, or the applicant. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
The applicant were to convert units, 10%, of the existing units and present that to the planning board, that would correct it. But it's not within our power to correct it, the applicant has to correct it. He's got, he's got two ways to correct it, in my view, but he may have other ways, but I don't want, you know, I don't represent him.
Yeah, well. David, just so that everyone understands, the $480,000 is based on 12 units at $40,000, which is a number that the state sets as a way to like to purchase affordable housing credits, so to speak, correct?
That's, that's right, the state sets, it's a payment in lieu of, some cities and towns have in your inclusionary zoning, they have the option to make a payment in lieu of of construction. Your inclusionary zoning ordinance, your inclusionary ordinance does not have that. So the only way they could seek that was to come to the council. That's what it's for, exactly. That's what it was modeled after.
Can you hear? We have a motion in a second to agree to this agreement, four years. Any other discussion on this?
Mrs. Bonioli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Rozier?
Yes.
Mr. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenek?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody.
Do we need to make a motion to authorize somebody to sign this, Mr. Agliozzi?
I think you're going to need to authorize the administrator to sign it, because it is a contract.
Okay, is there a motion to authorize the administrator to sign this? Motion by Mrs. Zelinski, is there a second, second by Mrs. Bonioli? Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Bonioli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Rozier?
Yes.
Mr. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenek?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Hurley, Mr. Agliozzi, Mr. Kravitz.
Thank you, everybody, I appreciate your time, consideration, have a good evening.
Thank you.
New business, discussion by council, what other action on creation of Hallowell Property Reuse Review Committee, Mrs. Zelinski.
Thank you, Mr. President, a lot going on here. I believe all of us were in attendance, the administrator, all the town council members, and roughly a total of about 50 people attended a meeting on March 7. And it was open dialogue of how we could best utilize the Hallowell property and grounds. Ideas came out of it, it went incubator businesses, trade shop, educational platforms.
I don't know.
May I continue, whoever that is?
Yeah, go ahead, I don't know.
Things that we looked at, I scrubbed out some notes, if you give me a chance, I wanted to make sure that I covered much of it here. You know, it was a multiple use recreation, startup businesses, incubator, artist studios, vocational training, dance. What came across really loud and clear during that meeting was that we're in dire need of something for our senior citizens. They have to travel to other communities, we don't offer them a venue where they can meet. And it was also made that this was not going to happen overnight, it was going to be in stages for it to be developed. So I received, and we're going to talk about how we can go about this under our town charter, but I received emails from Mr. Gerton, Tony Gerton serves on the Parks and Rec, Linda Tibo, former town administrator, Jeff Porter, planning board member, and an architect, and Alexander Norton from Brown University. They reached out to me saying that they would like to be on a committee to start this. My point here is that we need to get going, we need to get this started so that the next council coming in can make some type of decisions. I think that's basically it. Now, I asked Mrs. Agliozzi to make sure how we could go about this.
That's David, sorry.
I asked Mr. Agliozzi how we could go about this, you know, through the town charter article for the town council, we can do this. Set up I Hox, as well as the town administrator who I'm sitting with. I would. This town council left for some of us, one way or the other, I'm not going to be on the town council, we know that. So I'd like to get this started, we have people that are very anxious to stop this. And I'm going to ask the council how we should go about it. I think it should be, we should give them the resources and let the people, the community. 50 people showed up that day to weigh in on this. And I think it behooves us to let those people decide, as residents of North Smithfield, what we should be doing with Hallowell. Again, the things that came out of it were really clear, were a senior citizen location, more opportunities for our kids, education, incubator businesses, things of that nature. I think that tonight we can have that dialogue on how to start it. The paperwork that I got from Mr. Agliozzi states that we should have nine members, one of them should be a town council member, and we should stop making the appointments, although I would not limit it to those nine people, I would certainly, I'm sure Mr. Porter, when I'm speaking with him, he wants to facilitate the beginning of this. And he shares my sentiments, like, you know, the more, the better, let them show up, everybody's got an opinion. And so hopefully, we can have this happen. So that's just to start the conversation this evening, Mr. President.
Two ways to make it happen, either by ordinance, by resolution.
Yep.
Obviously, ordinance takes two ratings and whatnot, we know that. But I think, I think we're jumping ahead a little too far. I understand that we need to be looking at this, what we're going to do five, 10, 15 years, how we're going to use this whole site and everything. But I think right now, short term, we need to determine what we're going to do with that site as far as, are we going to remove some of those pods that need to be demolished? Because that's part of, one of the bond questions was, Hallowell School, and after touring it, we know that some of those pods probably need to be demolished and secured, because since that March meeting, at least two of those buildings have been broken into again. And the police have made arrests in one of those cases, so people are watching, and it was a citizen that responded. So people are watching the building, but I, short term, we've got to determine what are we going to do to secure and maintain that facility just as it is now? And so if we're going to use, say we're going to use that big building, number 10, that we want to continue to use that, what are we going to do to secure it, heat it, bring it up, you know, bring it up to usable standard, so to speak? But what are we going to do with those other pods? So it's like a two-pronged thing, we need to know what are we going to do immediately to safeguard and secure that building and demolish anything that we need to demolish? And how are we going to use that whole site in a global picture of land use that you talk about with, you know, having different people with expertise come in and do a whole big plan on helping that whole site over a number of years? So I think there's two pieces that we need to look at, and I think we need to look at that immediate one sooner, just like the annex. We need to address that sooner on what we're going to do. Are we going to tear down those outer two pods that are in the worst condition? Are we going to tear that down? What are we going to do to secure the other buildings that we want to use and those type of issues? So it's like a two-pronged approach where we need to look at immediate things. And at the same time, you can get this group of people together to start looking, what are we going to do? And a big, like a master plan type of thing, these are the things that we can use the building for. This is how we can use the space that we have, there's over 40 acres of land there. It is a big site, we have some nice, we have maps available to us that show wetland delineation and those type of issues. So they'll be useful to the group and anyone that we hire to come in. But I think we need to look at a short-term plan first of what are we going to do with that site to secure and maintain it? While we're looking to develop it.
I agree with you, as long as it's concurrent, it's not sequential. So you brought up a good point, absolutely, we got to secure the building. Also, while that's going on, this committee should be coming together to figure out what the residents want to use that property for. I'm agreeing with you on that.
Because that's what, that's what the $400,000 of that bond money that we discussed is for, is to demolish or secure that, build those facilities. It's not necessarily to figure out what we're going to do in the future, it's immediate. How are we going to secure this and at least maintain it so it doesn't further deteriorate?
As I want to go back to saying, in phases. So, yes, thank you, Mr. President.
So are you going to make, are you going to make a motion, or do you want to, Mr. Zelinski?
I'd like to offer some thoughts here, that first, we, I mean, Mr. Kravitz earlier today was putting was putting the final touches on the RFP that he has prepared to be able to identify a consultant, which would be a decision to be made by the town council ultimately, not by a subcommittee. It would be the administration's recommendation of a proponent who is believed to meet the qualifications that could start working on this assessment and evaluation, to the extent that you speak, Mr. President, with what buildings to keep, what buildings to demolish, what areas to identify for future uses. We, we have plenty of time to look forward to establish a committee for the bigger picture in the long run. The, the, the time, I think, to establish that is actually after we have some of the input from the consultant. We're very fortunate in North Smithfield to have an excellent planner. We're, in this circumstance right now is an administrative task, in my view. And I would ask the council to let that unfold. Beyond that, we are in a circumstance where in just a few weeks and then a few more weeks, the music that's playing now will stop and we'll see who's in what chairs. And the, the number of candidates for that committee to be formed will change substantially come November for certain. So I, I think it's important that we just, we, we do need to do this. We need to make sure that it's done properly. A community center is certainly among the highest frequency comments that have been made as to what can happen there. But, and we are incorporating in the RFP all of the questions or suggestions that were made to make sure that the consultant who we select ultimately, that you select ultimately, will understand how the people of the town have already spoken and can work with those comments as they begin their work to look at the, the opportunity. So, I mean, I, I'm not saying that I'm opposed to a committee to work on this. I just don't think this is the time to be doing that. I think we have time in the future that will be more apropos to the circumstance. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other council members? Mr. Ogier?
I agree with what Gary just said. I, I'm all for community input. You know, I think at some point, a committee should be formed. It should be comprehensive with people in town. There should be community-wide surveys, et cetera. But I think we first need to find out what, what space is functional, what space isn't, what is used and what isn't. And I, I would like to see, I would imagine, whenever that comes out, that you'd want to know what locations you have to work with, what ones you don't, and to kind of wait and see. The other thing is, then, would that consultant tell you how much money would be needed to build certain projects? Or would that be step two of this project? You know, it was like, for example, community centers being thrown out there left and right. If a community center was decided, would that then be part of that subcommittees group to say, all right, we recommend a, a community center? How much is it going to cost? How are we going to finance it? That wouldn't be part of this first administrative function, would it be, Gary? In the RFP?
You know, it's hard to answer that right now, council. We have to start looking and, you know, try to, to get the professional input to evaluate buildings and to look at how they fit the purpose. You know, we're all looking at that building 10 as the president has suggested, and I do think that it has merit for that purpose. But, you know, like I've talked about with our other, you know, focus earlier tonight with the, the police station, let's not make the mistake of trying to be, you know, forcing something into a place that it doesn't work in. Let's get the input from professionals that can help us understand what, you know, can truly work and be long-lasting to the community. Let's make the 50-year decision, not the 10-year decision, is what I'm trying to advocate here.
Thank you.
Mr. Vadeney?
Mrs. O'Hara?
I, I also agree with Mr. Zalinski. That's something basic. It should be done first and foremost. And then after, I think, everything will fall in the way it should be with, say, an established study, et cetera.
So no action necessary? Now, we're just going to keep going on this path? Mrs. Zalinski?
Mr. President, I'm still concerned. I applaud the administrator for going out for an RFP. I don't know the specifics of it. Is that, is that on the board? Is that up on the?
Not yet.
Not yet? Okay. So it's not available to the public? So it'll be Thursday? It'll, it'll be available Thursday, the administrator's telling me. I didn't know it was actually timed firing, so now it's news to me that we're doing that. My intent was to keep moving this forward. It's good to hear the administrators going out to get us. We did have a basic dialogue on that, yeah. We're moving. But I just want to make this really loud and clear that one, it's going to be a decision of, of, of the residents, what they need. And it's a great property, as we all know. Grass, seagrass, one way in and out, but the traffic's over there, traffic signs. It's a beautiful property. And I think the residents of the town would certainly appreciate having a lot of input into the best uses over there. So I want to thank, thank you, Ms. President, and the council members for putting it on. I'd also like to thank Mr. Gertin and Administrator Tebow, Jeff Porter, and Ms. Norton for, you know, being very involved in this. I want to make sure that not only they, but other people are involved in this process as we move through. So thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, you, you missed the open forum, but Mr. Jones spoke about this in the open forum, and so did Mr. Porter did as well, again. So there are, there are people interested in this. And so, yeah, when we do get going forward, we will, we will be creating a committee that's going to be watching this.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President.
Next slide, discussion by council vote on other action on Adrian Sosa's presentation on Eagle Scout project to benefit the town. Mrs., and I do see that Mr. Sosa is on Zoom with us.
It's all set. You can share your screen so you can show your presentation.
Hey, Adrian, how you doing?
Good. How are you?
Good. I, I just want to leave a little bit into what Adrian's putting forth there. I'm not going to steal his thunder. But you know, our budget cycle is going to be beginning up in a couple of months toward the end of the year. I, I think we need Adrian on board to help us with it. When you see his presentation, it's stellar. The young man has a future in accountancy and financing. He's, he's really done a great job on it. So Adrian, it's all yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Town Council, for having me present my project today. This is my Eagle Scout project. And the what, the where, and the when of my Eagle Scout project? The what is, I will be building new baseball AAA dugouts. I will be building them in fall 2020 or spring 2021, depending on social distancing restrictions and town approval. And where I will be building it? In Pacheco Park in the town of North Smithfield. It is behind the Miners Field, which is also behind the concession stands. Why my Eagle Scout project is important? It's important all around because all around, it benefits the community in three ways. It makes, it benefits the parents because the parents are happier when their children have a better experience. And that's what I'm trying to do here, make the kids have a better experience. Moving on to the kids, it makes the kids have a more valuable experience for the younger people who want to play baseball, because I used to play baseball a lot as a kid. And in the community, it increases the value of community to all the residents involved in Little League and recreational activities. I used to play Little League when I was a kid, and I want the kids who are entering into Little League to have a better experience than I did. Because when the sun's beaming down on you and it's 95 degrees, it's good to have a nice shade over your head, and that's what I want to provide for them. Who needs to be involved in my Eagle Scout project? Mr. Martin, who is my Eagle coach and mentor? The members of the troop who will be volunteering to help my, help create my project? My mom and dad to help me with fundraising? The town officials, Little League and the community to approve my project to be built? So this is the materials needed in the budget list. As you can see, it's $2,565, and it's $1,250 per dugout. And so the, this is just all the stuff together. And how will I provide leadership for my Eagle Scout project? For safety, I'll make sure there's first aid kits on site. Safety equipment will be used for everyone. And there will be at least four cell phones available with signal, just in case of an emergency. Adults will only use certain power tools, which is required by the BSA, so none of the kids get hurt. And a safety officer will be on site at all times, which will either be my mom, who's a certified nurse, or Curtis Ritzi, who is also a paramedic. Supervision, I will provide supervision because I will be there to project manage the entire efforts of the project. I will recruit volunteers and create and manage schedules and duty rosters for volunteers. I will create a project plan with tasks and ownership to participants, and I will provide food and meals, or food and water to all the volunteers that come. And for the fundraising, I'm going to coordinate and plan all fundraising activities. And so far, as of 6/16/2020, that was the date that I presented my Eagle Scout project to the board of our troop. This is how many hours I have invested in my project. You can see all along there. And the dugouts were recommended to be like the softball dugouts because we contacted Parks and Rec, and they wanted, they let us know that they have to be like that. So they'll be like that, and they'll be a little sturdier and better material. And estimated total hours involved in mentorship coaching. So there's going to be an approximate of 285 hours for the workdays, which is 54 to 60 hours a day for five days. So what it means by is there's going to be 60 hours in total because each person that stays there counts as six hours. And if we have 10 people, there's going to be 60 hours. And so we estimated that the project workdays would be around five days, and there would be one prep day or a couple prep days. They would be digging holes, installing sonar tubes, and filling them with concrete. And then there's going to be, we estimated about two building and painting, or two days for the building and painting. And on the right, you can see the estimated hours per workday. So the top five people are the people that are going to be on site every day, so we already accounted for them. And we estimate around four to five scout and adult leaders are going to be coming. But, but if more sign up, then we'll take them because we'll find something for them to do. And the next slide is my fundraising plan. So for the bake sales, you can see there's going to be 2.5 hours per scout per day, and it's going to be two days, which would add up to 25 hours. And if more scouts sign up, that's fine, we'll get more hours. And then for the bake sales, we're going to have donated baked goods from troop family members to be sold at various locations. And the locations are listed there, Bridgeto's, Walmart, St. John's Parish. We will need to await social distancing restrictions or consider alternate, such as online ordering and delivering of baked goods. And for dinner events, there's going to be eight hours per scout. That includes the preparation time and the cleaning up time and the serving time. So that'd be probably around an 80-hour estimate. And then it's going to be a clam cake chowder dinner at St. John Church, if restrictions allow, in the fall. And for donations and sponsorships, we're going to be looking for donations from local business leaders and family members who are willing to support in this endeavor for our community. All right. The next steps prior to beginning my construction, I need to acquire town council approval from a beneficiary, and, which I'm doing now. And then the next step is I'll need to submit my fundraising paperwork to Narragansett Council. And then the next step I have is to have a dig safe inspection prior to beginning work. And are there any questions?
Any questions?
More of a statement, Mr. President. Adrian's really done his homework. Adrian, don't forget to add three hours that you were sitting here waiting for us to hear your application. So the hours, the hours are ticking up. You're going to be there. Mr. President, as you know, you've been through this a million times. You sponsored some Eagle Scouts yourself. Adrian's going to be looking for a signature for his Eagle project and application for fundraising forms. And I, I think Adrian's going to probably hunt you down so you can sign that, Mr. President. If there's no objections, I'll make a motion that we approve of Adrian's project and to also approve of any fundraising forms if, if, if necessary.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. O'Hara? Be glad to sign it. I mean, I talk, I talk to your mother all the time when I'm, when I'm at the, at the other Eagle Courts of Honor. Always a pleasure to be there. Like Mrs. Zalinski said, I, I used to wear the tan shirt for years and years. A son of a, father of an Eagle Scout, so looks like you got a well-thought-out plan, well, well articulated. Whatever we can do to help you out. If, if you need my signature, I'll be in touch either with, with your dad, your mom, or Mr. Martin, and we'll get, we'll get, we'll get anything that we need signed and keep you moving forward.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Martin will probably hunt you down for the signature. All right. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, everyone.
We haven't approved it yet. We only got a motion in a second. Roll, roll call vote.
Baramioli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vadeney?
Yes. Good luck, and we'll, I'll be in touch.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next discussion by council vote, other action on resolution urging an emergency exemption in the computation of the maintenance of effort requirement established by Rhode Island General Law 16-7-23. I had Mr. Igliozzi with the direction of the council at the last meeting draw up a resolution that we could send out to other towns and state reps and state senators, as well as the governor. We did, we did send out the resolution last month that we were looking to see that they would fund education to the level that the governor had proposed back in January. The concern was, that brought forward by the administrator was, even though we went through the budget process and we, we kind of like put money aside to, to address some of the shortfall, not maybe all of the shortfall. We don't, we don't know what the shortfall was going to be, but to address some of it, that if we did that, even if it was, even if it was half of what we put aside, that would change the maintenance of effort going forward for years and years. And, and so the thought process being is if the state is going to back away from their commitment to public education, that we shouldn't be held responsible because we met our obligation of providing the education to the children that they need in, in coming forward with, with those other funds. We shouldn't be negatively impacted going forward every year. You know, just say, round numbers, that we put 800,000 back into the school department. That becomes a new maintenance of effort, which isn't really fatal loss. And so that's what we talked about at the last council meeting, and we directed the solicitor to draw up a resolution. I hope that everybody, everybody read it. Does anybody have any questions about it? I'm going to make a motion that we, that we approve the resolution and send it out to all our state reps and state senators, as well as every, every community in the state, as well as the governor. Is there a second?
Second.
Secondly, Mrs. O'Hara and Mrs. Zalinski. Any other discussion? Mr. Ogier?
Yeah, I just, I know that some stuff was brought up in open forum. I obviously read this, and this makes sense to me. But I just, just, just so I have all the information, I know there were some questions about, was there anything in our charter to prevent, like, that would require this to even be needed? Or was there anything in state law? So I guess if David could just answer briefly, that would just be... that would just be, that would just be good for me to, to know.
Mr. Igliozzi?
I guess, I guess I don't, um, Mr. President, this, um, as you know, this was drafted at the behalf of the administrator indicating his concern of a negative impact on maintenance of effort. The, I don't know of any charter provision, provision that would apply. Uh, there is, um, there is a, a state statute that talks about supplemental funds to support a um, a, a past annual expenditure. And I don't know if that would address the situation. That wasn't brought up at the time. Um, if, at the very least, this would be belt and suspenders. I don't know if the other, I don't know if the other statute would apply um, or not. I wasn't asked to look into that.
Okay.
And the, the, to kind of dovetail into that, the other comment that was made about was taking these funds that we, that we've set aside in case. It's not my intention just to say, oh, the governor didn't pass the budget, here's the money. No, the money will come when they're in deficit. It would never be, I wouldn't do like we did, like they did last year, where we put money aside and then we gave it to them without knowing they were in deficit. I wouldn't do that because that creates the problem with the maintenance of effort. So we need to be sure that they're in deficit. And then when they submit they're in deficit, this is part of the um, resolution to it. They have to submit a plan, how they're going to resolve the deficit. That would be part of that plan is that we have these monies in reserve that we haven't spent because we put them aside. So yeah, my, my intention isn't just to say, oh, I'm going to pass the budget or the state, the, the senate passed the budget and, and they came up short. Here's the money. Nope. When you get to the point that you're out of money, then come back and see us. And we'll try to, we'll try to work with you on it. But we put money aside to reserve it. It's not a necessary, here you go, cop watch, here's the money. Not my intention to do that. I don't think it was the, the administrator's intention to do that either when, when we put those monies aside. Mr. Zazowski?
I, I just want to emphasize uh, your statements. Yes, Mr. President. Uh, we set money aside as a potential uh, to meet a need if it develops. Um, there isn't a community in this state that knows what's happening with its uh, state aid, education right now. I talked with another uh, uh, member of a budget committee from another community just this afternoon. And the budget that they adopted, he, he, he looks at and says, you know, it's almost meaningless because the revenue side isn't complete. And you know, that, this is my recommendation based on what I have participated in, based on the discussions I have participated in with the League of Cities and Towns and that, that league's leadership. Uh, I encourage your uh, endorsement of this uh, resolution. Thank you.
Now, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Vardamiole? Yes. Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vatney?
Yes. Just as a reminder, we need to get into the clerk's office as soon as we can. Just to sign this so that it can be, can be sent out. Thank you all. Next item, discussion by council vote or other action on ordinance to amend section fifteen dash five to erect the stop sign in the intersection of Sunny Crest Avenue. The vice president and myself did ask the solicitor to draw up an ordinance for us to review. Um, he did do that. And you should have it in your packet. Um, we did hear a lot of you, unfortunately, Mrs. Walensky, you missed it. We had a lot, quite a conversation in the open forum. It went on for quite a while. A lot of it was centered around the stop sign. Some, some feel a need. Some don't see a need for it. We did get a petition with forty-four names on it saying they didn't see a need for the stop sign. Um, we do have the petition that we mentioned, that you mentioned two weeks ago. It had eighteen names on it that were saying, you know, that they were in favor of the stop sign. There's something in the middle of all of this that we have to, that we have to look at and, and it might be that we did get a letter um, from the police department today, from the administrator, from Lieutenant Bergeron, who conducted the, the, the traffic studies out there. Again, he didn't see the need for um, a stop sign out there. They, they've been on patrol. Um, they went back to twenty eighteen and they don't have calls on, on speeders out there. Um, it was stated that, oh yeah, people are calling all the time. Um, there's no record that the police are telling us that there have been speeders out there. Um, I don't, we have an ordinance. It was, it was drawn up. Um, I just don't know where you want to go and if, if that's the right, um, the right decision to make is that ordinance. Or do we want to have other signage put out there? Perhaps children at play, you know, slow down or, or, or something like that. Um, to see and give it, give it more time. Um, they're saying that there's not a lot of traffic when these things are done, which would beg to the question to ask, okay, when is the traffic flow the highest so that we can actually put a, an officer out there to see it? I, I don't know. Mrs. Walensky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, but I wish uh, one of my three computers and two of my networks would have connected so I could have heard this. Uh, so, yeah, we did receive a letter back on May fifteenth. Uh, it was to Chief Lafferty from Lieutenant Bergeron. What uh, what we didn't receive in the package was a letter dated June seventeenth from Lieutenant Bergeron to the chief. Uh, the place a stop sign at the intersection of Sunny Crest and Carlton would not pose any issues regarding traffic. So I just wanted that.
No, we had that, we had that at the last meeting, Paul.
Yes, yeah, but uh, what you sent out said they did not contain that, Mr. President. That's not a sticking point. I just want to make sure that that was meant.
Okay.
Um, you know, vox populi, the voice of the people. I talked to some folks on the other side of Carlton Avenue and I don't know what they said tonight, but what was expressed to me is that we're aware of the children. We have our children. Um, I think there's been uh, let's, let's put it this way. There's more than one side of a sign to a sign. So I, I heard some dialogue with the folks out there. I can tell you the good that's come out of this right now. It's reinforcing the awareness of safety and the kids in the streets. I don't think there's a resident over in that neighborhood that's not aware of it now. Um, so I, I think however this vote goes, whether we go for a four-way stop sign or not, I think it behooves this council to provide additional safety uh, uh, measures over there. You alluded to it, Mr. President. Uh, one of the things I have is children playing, child at play. We need to have those signs up at the, more at the entrance where the twenty-five mile per hour is and maybe on the other side of Carlton. Freestanding, making sure they're not getting lost with trees and telephone poles and other signs. It's imperative. So no, no matter how this vote goes, we uh, we have to make sure that safety over there because I've been out there, there are, you've been out there, so many of the council people have been out there. There are a lot of, a lot of children out there playing. They can't do circles in their driveway. I, I get it. When I was a kid, I didn't do circles in my driveway either. It's, it's uh, hopefully we can put in some type of traffic uh, safety signs at a minimum. And that's where I'm at with it right now because uh, forty-four people have uh, signed a petition saying they don't want it. Eighteen have signed a petition saying, petition saying they do want it. Uh, the majority do not want it. And I think the, the majority are going to be, have always been cautious. There might be a stray person here and there. And there may be a delivery truck that blasts through there. Quite honestly, um, it's probably more outsiders and the delivery trucks trying to make up time. They've been extremely busy during COVID. They're trying to make up time. Uh, I, I'm glad we're having this conversation and I'm glad the people are aware that uh, we all care about the safety of children. We should take whatever steps we can to make sure that the uh, the children are safe out there. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, we can do, we can do one of two things then. We can, we can seek to have the public safety director, police department and put up, put up more signage. All we could do is do first reading on this ordinance. Clerk has posted a public hearing in two weeks, which would be second reading. Doesn't mean that we have to put a stop sign up. It would just be, we could go back through this and, and get more input in two weeks. It, it depends on what you want to do.
Yeah, I, I, I want to be the voice of the people, the original twen, the eighteen. But I also want to be the voice of the new forty-four people that don't want it. So my concern now is the safety of the children. I, while you were talking, Mr. Vatney, I, I said to the administrator, I put you on the spot. I said to the administrator, would you mind putting up uh, child at play signs out? They said, not a problem at all. So um, I, I think it's a good step in the right, right way. And I, I don't know that we have to go through with the uh, the ordinance and to have a second reading, but uh, I'll, I'll defer to fellow council members on that one.
Mr. Igliozzi has his hand up.
Do you want to speak, Mr. Ogier, or are you just resting?
Oh, no, I do. Yeah, I didn't know if David was to speak as well. I I'll be, I'll be brief then, and then David can go. I actually was not sure if the ordinance would was really the solution to go. Um, I understand the, the situation over there. I, I agree with the president, council president, that, you know, we should be probably doing more signage, children at play, maybe additional speed limit signs wherever they're not there and trying to figure out when is the problem the worst. I struggle with the four-way stop because I don't know if adding the stop sign is really going to fix the issue, especially if it's from people out of town. Um, so I think I, I would, I would agree that I think the children at play and the additional signage would be a good first step. And then uh, monitoring the situation, seeing if it needs to escalate to a, a stop sign.
Anyone else? Mr. Zazowski?
President, just for, from a policy perspective, I want to make it clear that, you know, it was said at the last meeting that one person was stopping something from happening. Um, I suppose people are entitled to look at it that way. But I, I want to make certain that, you know, traffic, restriction of traffic is a purview of the town council, not the town administrator or the public safety director. Um, putting up warning signs of children at play and such is something that I would um, take as a responsibility of the administration. But based on everything that we have done in our uh, our traffic controls in the past with weight limits, with stop signs and so forth, those are actions that are required to be taken by, not by a vote of people on the street, but by a vote of the North Smithfield Town Council. Just so, you know, it's a matter of information at this point, whatever you do with this. But, you know, I've indicated to you that I don't think that a, that a traffic control device, a stop sign, in this case, is appropriate for this based on my conversation with the, with us, uh, the, the state uh, uh, traffic commission and an engineer there who is qualified to make that decision. I, but, and, and I, I stand by that recommendation to you. These are emotional things as we look at it. We do need to control our children. We do need to make sure that they learn to respect traffic in the street. And we also need to protect them as much as we possibly can with the right kind of guidance uh, for the drivers and such. Uh, I think a, a, a stop sign is not warranted. But all that said, it's not me holding this up. This is a, or, or making this decision. These decisions should be a, a decision of the town council. Otherwise, we'd have stop signs all over the town. Thank you.
Well, I think, I think that's why there's a process and, and we follow the process by going to the ordinance because now it brought the issue to light and we got more input from people. And so we can take a different direction right now. And, but we'll, we'll keep it, we'll keep it under view and it's not going to go away, but try to remedy it and we don't go into the stop sign. So I think, I think by using the process of posting an ordinance, having a public hearing, getting public input is going to, is going to be helpful. That's, that's what you're saying is that's, that's why it's there, that it's not one person makes a decision.
Correct.
If, if, if that's, if you agree with us, then if we can put up that signage and, and we'll monitor, we'll monitor with the police, we'll continue to monitor it. And if, if we need to revisit it, we'll revisit it.
And if I might, Mr. President, the, the, the police department will use its message board again and again as needed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President? Mrs. Walensky?
Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable. I came prepared to make that exact statement you made about children at play. So let, let's take it from there and we'll, we'll see. Uh, hopefully, uh, again, there's a reinforcement of the awareness out there. So I, I think we'll be okay with, by starting out with the children at play signs strategically located. Let the police department decide where they should go. And uh, to, sitting to the right of me is the administrator. I was just wondering how long that might take to do from.
You know, a week to ten days.
You go closer, you can twist this on better than we can.
Yeah.
It won't take long.
It won't take long. I think we're going to be good on this. So uh, what, what do we need to do, Mr. President? Do we need to withdraw this off? Or do we want to continue?
Just no action, there's no action taken. So it'll just, it will just sit there then.
All right, yeah, I'm comfortable with it. Um, I hope the residents are all, everybody, both sides of the stop sign, uh, proposed stop sign are comfortable with it as well.
Ms. Scott?
So I'm not putting it on for a second reading next week, next agenda.
Correct. It will not have a second reading. It doesn't even get a, didn't even pass first reading, so.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Okay. At this time, I'm going to entertain a motion to extend the meeting till ten thirty. Motion by Mrs. O'Hara, second by Mr. Walensky. Roll call vote.
Mrs. Vardamiole?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vatney?
Yes. Next item, discussion by council vote or other action on trash collection at High Rocks Condominiums One Upper Drive. Mr. DeRoyce?
Uh, sorry, there was a miscommunication between me and Mr. DeRoyce, or Mr. DeRoyce and I, and he'd like it continued to the seventeenth, please.
Okay.
Sorry.
He asked at the last council meeting and I told him we would put it on for this meeting.
He, I thought so too, but he understood that we were going to notify him and then it got, we got misunderstood.
Okay, all right. So we'll, we'll move it to the seventeenth then, everybody.
Thank you.
Discussion by council vote or other action on school bonds. Mr. Jesus? Steven Turner Incorporated invoice number three two zero one. Six hundred and twenty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. Their motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Ogier, second by Mr. Walensky. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Vardamiole?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vatney?
Yes. And next is the invoice from SPV DPM number nine zero zero one seven five three seven, dated seven six twenty, twenty, and the amount of five hundred and twenty dollars. Their motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Vardamiole. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hara and Mr. Ogier. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Vardamiole?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vatney?
Yes. Next discussion by council, what other action on post-employment benefits act through evaluation services. Mr. Jesus?
Yes, I'm recommending to extend the engagement with um, Dan Zinger Markoff for our other post-employment benefits for the next two years. He raised the fees by a hundred dollars if we continue the contract for another two years. I'm recommending to move forward with that and that will be part of the FY twenty-one audit and computer services budget.
So we, we budgeted for it?
Yes. We already had budgeted for it. We, we were either going to go out for RFP or extend his contract. Last couple of times, he was the only one that actually bid. Um, so I'm recommending to just extend his contract for two years.
You've heard the recommendation of the finance director. Is there a motion to approve extending the contract with Dan Ziger Markoff LLP for other post-employment benefits actuarial evaluation services? Fiscal year twenty twenty, five thousand fifty dollars in fiscal year twenty twenty-one, mid-cycle valuation, five hundred and fifty dollars. Their motion to approve? Move, Mr. President. Walensky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hara and Mrs. Vardamiole. Any discussion? Very none, roll call vote.
Mrs. Vardamiole? Yes. Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vatney?
Yes. Next item, discussion by council vote or other action on salaries and wage ordinance. Mr. Jesus for first reading.
The wage ordinance is, um, it piggybacks off the budget and basically just gives us what the wages were for nineteen twenty and what they proposed for twenty twenty-one, what they were adopted at. they were adopted at. I just want to point out that council ninety-four is still, the contract has not been ratified, so the hourly rates are the same as last year.
Is it pending approval or?
We're still negotiating.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve for first reading?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Baramioli, is there a second?
Second.
And Mrs. O'Hara and Mr. Zelinski. Any other discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mrs. Baramioli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vannay?
Yes. Next discussion by council, vote or other action on abatements. Mr. Jesus?
The abatement is recommendation of the tax assessor, and I concur, is a bill that went, that was, that belonged to North Providence, was paid in North Providence, it was also paid here, so we are refunding the money. And the abatement amount is three hundred and four dollars and eighty-three cents.
Heard the recommendation of the finance director, is there a motion to approve? Motion by Mrs. Zelinski, is there a second?
Second.
And by Mrs. O'Hara. Any other discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mrs. Baramioli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vannay?
Yes. Next item, discussion by council, vote or other action on award of professional services contract to Vertical Six Inc. Mr. Zazowski?
Mr. President, as we discussed in the budget process, I had been looking at going to a, a blend of both our part-time IT director and an outside resource, and we pursued pricing to that regard. In the meantime, what has transpired is that, well, actually last Friday, was our IT director's last day, by his decision, not by mine. He has another opportunity that my understanding is will not require him to be working as many hours as he has been with the things that he's been doing during the day, as well as the things that he's been doing after hours for us. So we are forced to move quickly to a circumstance of engaging an outside resource. I did, as I noted to both the president and the vice president, already act to take, do a short-term agreement with this company called Vertical Six, based on the compendium of pricing that I have accomplished in this regard with a summary that shows that I believe that, well, first, the, the technical talent is there. They helped us move all of our equipment from the two former buildings into this one and get it all up and operating over a weekend. They did an outstanding job in that. You had previously approved the authority to hire them for that purpose. This is a, a separate agreement that would allow them to provide our IT services both remotely and on premises as needed for a period of two years with options to extend. I think it is both in the interest of the town from a performance standpoint and in the interest of the town from a financial standpoint. There, depending on how things transpire, this actually could be a savings over our current circumstance.
You've heard the recommendation of the administrator, is there a motion to approve going forward with a, a service contract with Vertical Six?
So moved.
By Mrs. O'Hara, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ogier and Mrs. Baramioli. I've said it before, I'm not, I'm not the most tech savvy person in the world, but during that move transition, I did see these guys, because I was in the building numerous times during that weekend, and I did see these, these guys were there at seven o'clock in the morning. They did a complete switch over all the computer systems, all the, the servers, all of the switching, they took, and, you know, they were in there, they had their walkie-talkies, their phones going back and forth, they were in different rooms and getting everything running. I was pretty impressed with how they worked and what they got done.
Not.
So, you know, when, when the, when the administrator mentioned that he was looking to have them come in and give us a service, we're having, having these guys come in and do it as well.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mrs. Baramioli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vannay?
Next item, discussion by council, vote or other action on Park Drive and Edward Ave Sewer Project. Tomiozi Inc. invoice number five. We do have a, an application for payment in the amount of two hundred and twenty-six thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents, has been signed off by a architect overseeing the job. I'm assuming there are funds, Mr. Jesus, the remaining funds in the road resurfacing project for this?
Yes.
All work has been completed, Mr. Zazowski?
Well, what is represented in this invoice has been completed, yes. They haven't cleaned up the edges as yet, and there will be a punch list, there's a retainer, retainage rather. It's a progress payment, Mr. Vannay.
Heard the recommendation in the comments, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Baramioli, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hara. Any discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mrs. Baramioli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vannay?
Next item, discussion by council, vote or other action on Boyle and Fogarty contract to add alternates one to nine for roadway reconstruction at Mechanic Street and Old Great Road. Mr. Zazowski, sorry.
Mr. President, members of the council, this is a enjoyable presentation to the council. With the, the invoice that you just approved for Park View and Edward, the, we're, we're close to completion there, which means that we have a pretty good idea of what the final cost is going to be. On what was a, a two-mile project of road resurfacing that we started last year, and if you recall, we ran out of time with access to this contractor, but they held their prices to this year and have gone forward and done the work. And we are about, you know, the, the expectation is that the final invoice that we get from that project will put us only thirty to forty thousand dollars under budget for that entire project. What also has transpired of late is the water line installation in Mechanic Street and Old Great Road, where you know that we have one point four million dollars in funding from the infrastructure bank and with nine hundred thousand dollars of that being forgiven. That project has gone along very well, to a point where the engineers there expect that the project will come in at about a hundred to a hundred and thirty thousand dollars under budget for the water line installation itself. The combination of that and my evaluation of our overall standing with the prior year paving allotments that we had in reserve and our current year's circumstance, plus the status of Mechanic Street and Old Great Road project all wrapped up into one, gives me the confidence to say to you that we do have the funding to be able to go forward now with accepting the alternate assembly, this, this alternate, alternates one through nine, which is really one item, it's paving the roadway after all of the, the pipeline work is complete. The timing is good, as I said, that the, the piping is in, the, the line is live now, the hydrants are, are wet, and we will be, I've got a, a draft letter to go out to the residents on Mechanic and Old Great Road, that they'll be able to begin connections as soon as they like. The project's gone along extremely well, and again, it just comes down to a circumstance of authorizing the resurfacing of the road to get it done this year and have that finished. So I, I recommend that we go forward with acceptance of alternates one to nine for the roadway reconstruction at Mechanic Street and Old Great Road as part of the water line installation work.
And the total of those is four hundred and sixty-one thousand, five hundred dollars?
Yes, sir.
And we do have the funding available from the infrastructure bank?
From the infrastructure bank and some of our own.
And from our, our own repaving projects?
Yeah, and we will have something on the order of about three hundred thousand dollars left in that pavement account, is our best estimate at this point in time.
Heard the recommendation of the, all of these bills are paid, I'm sorry, sir. You've heard the, the recommendation of the administrator to approve add alternates one through nine to Fogarty. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Zelinski, second by Mrs. Baramioli. Any discussion? Makes to see that some projects go along smoothly.
As you know, Mr. President, they're not easy, but you're right. We had a little bit of rock, but that didn't exceed the, the estimate that was in the budget, so we, I don't want to say we got lucky, but, yeah.
We did. No further discussion, roll call, vote.
Mrs. Baramioli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vannay?
Yes. Do we need to authorize the administrator to sign this?
Yes.
Yes, please.
There a motion to authorize the administrator to sign? Motion by Mrs. O'Hara, is there a second?
Second.
Again, by Mrs. Zelinski and Mrs. Baramioli. Any other discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mrs. Baramioli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vannay?
Yes. Next item, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Baramioli, second by Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Roll call, vote.
Mrs. Baramioli?
Yes.[1784.83]